Great. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for September 5th, 2019. First on our agenda is a review of ZBA application for Chris and Casey O'Stryker. Is that you? Is that how you say it, O'Stryker? At 125 Rice Avenue. So before we get started, are you talking through the application?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to start by saying if this isn't a hearing, so we're just looking at some of the details of your site plan. Part of our role is just to make sure that the project is, fits into the area and that it meets certain safety and certain components like lighting or signage or parking or things like that. Obviously, it goes to the ZBA at the end of the month, so really, we're here for a technical review. So we're just gonna be asking you questions. A lot of times applicants will have a lawyer or an engineer, but you're just going to be speaking to it yourselves.
Yes.
Okay, so just so you understand what happens, we'll really just ask you certain questions about the plans of the property, or just to clarify some things as part of the site plan. And if you don't know the answer, or whatever the case, that's okay. You can sort of just, whatever you do know, if you could share that, that would be great, just to give us a little more insight. But I don't want you to feel intimidated or that we're, you know, we just, we'll ask a lot of questions, but that's just part of our job, so. Okay. Hi, Michelle.
Good evening, sorry.
Okay, great. So, and as I mentioned, it's not a hearing, but if there's anybody here that has any comments about the project, I will allow for public comments at the end for anyone here who wanted to say something. So if you wouldn't mind getting started and maybe walk us through a little bit about the project itself?
So, my name is Chris, this is my wife, Casey. We in our son made the move from 125 Rice Avenue to 1 March of this year. And we purchased the property with the hope that we'd be able to have my dog walk through these on the property. It's beautiful. It's part of Edmunds Hill Conservation Area. It's actually surrounded on three sides by conservation. And it doesn't act like a, which is actually an actual property. It's a beautiful property, and we thought, we've been looking at this property since 2000, August of 2017. And, and we just think that it's perfect for the business that I operate. I've been conducting off-leash and on-leash dog walking adventure hikes since March of 2014. We used to take our dogs off-leash, however, the state regulations in regards to wildlife areas, they changed the regulations, so now dogs have to be leashed in any wildlife area in the state, which made things a little bit more difficult for us. I have the greatest drive in the world. I love dogs, and we get out there and we have such a good time. I still operate my business at local parks. We do leash walks two times a day, usually less than that. Not a kennel, not a dog daycare, very, very important differentiation in what I do. So basically, the way that my day goes, and I currently have one employee, and I hope some days, maybe three or four employees additional, with the maximum probably sixty a week. Ideally, I would like to have five vans max running at some point, going pickups, drop-offs, and hikes on that premises. So how our morning starts is we'll go pick up a group of four to six dogs from people's homes, and they're going to work for ten, twelve hours. We'll come in, we'll take their dog out for about an hour hike, and then we'll clean them up, bring them, put them back in the van, and bring them back to their homes, and then they'll rest until their owners get home. And we used to do that twice a day, and in between our hikes, we do some visits to people's houses and houses.
Okay.
That pretty much is all.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? I guess, Mellie, if you want me to, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, so what are the times that you're looking to be operating this business and just study?
That's a good question. So eight-thirty to four-thirty typically if it's, it does actually be darker colors in the night, so we don't walk out in the dark, and I don't like people driving in the dark. So usually, you know, generally, it also comes at eight-thirty, we can start off. We'll pick up, and then it's usually while most people are working in the house. Just want to be fair, it's not open to the public for our own purposes.
Uh-huh. For your business, yeah. And you'll have dogs coming and going throughout the day, or you do a certain number of pickups?
It's cyclical, so, and actually, I do that intentionally, because I could even have smaller groups of dogs. So if, say, for example, I had two other people helping me, I would come and I would go also walk, and then they would start a few minutes from that. They would go in loops. It's not always like that, I mean, sometimes there's weather concerns, you know?
Sure.
For example, Chauncey, the late Monday freezing over, and I go to see tourists with dogs. I mean, passable at some parts, and you have to try to choose some other park to go, or go to, but.
And so, do you have a number, a maximum number of dogs that you, you don't, you won't be housing any at all? So there's no?
Well, we do house customers' dogs sometimes, but it's never more than a dog at a time. I have a three-year-old son at home.
Yeah.
So, I don't like a lot of dogs in the house. And we do have a dog. But it's important, I'm saying, I don't want to be a kennel.
Right.
Actually, so what'll happen is, I know a lot of the people that pets in the area, so quite often, people will, I'll tell friends that I have, I'm not a pet sitting company, I don't want to stay at people's houses, but they'll go and they'll, they'll sit with those dogs.
Use them.
However, they will oftentimes, well, owners will be able to join us on our hikes.
Sure.
And if a dog should stay with us, we'll have them, say they're boarding for a week, then they would be part, they would hike with our groups on the stay.
And you primarily will be doing the pickup and drop-off? You won't have a number of people coming in and out, or is that part of the?
So, yes, we do a pickup drop-off. We're not, we're not a, like a daycare penalty where people drop their dogs off. No, I don't really have any type of.
Okay. That's all I have. Okay. Michelle, do you have questions?
Just a couple of questions. So I know that you're going before the ZBA for approval, and if we sent a letter on, we, so in your letter, you said that you frequently allow them to stay overnight, maybe one or two. So it could be a condition that either none stay overnight, or not more than one, or something like that. Because I know that over time, your business might change, and you might all of a sudden find that someone wants five dogs staying overnight, and then the neighbors thought, oh, it was only one or two, and now it's five, but.
That's an excellent point. I wouldn't do that simply for the reason, not that I don't, wouldn't want that, because I do love having dogs around.
Yeah.
But we have a two-year-old, no, sixteen. So I don't think I would be having a whole lot of time overnight.
I know, but, but once it gets approved for the business, you could be looking out ten years, right? Five to ten?
I would be willing to take on that condition, no problem. I would ask probably that the board consider me to have a dog or two with my dog if I had a loss.
Okay. And then, your property is sixteen acres in size, is that correctly?
It's seventeen point nine.
Seventeen point nine?
It's kind of interesting, it's, if you think of a triangle and two right triangles, you've got a triangle in front where our house is.
Right.
And you have a smaller right-hand angle where there's a stream that kind of goes through it, and then there's a massive right-hand angle that goes up the hill, it covers the top of the hill.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, of the seventeen acres that you have, and this four to six, four to eight acres that you use for the dogs, is that closer to the residential part, is in that middle part, is it up a way in the wooded part? I mean, how much would you say that four to eight acres is buffering from the residential area?
It's a, that's also a really good question. It's away from residences. So if you look at our road, Rice Avenue, we have someone that lives across the street from us, but the homes that are, are kind of abutting the aqueduct, they have woods, for the most part, they have woods in their backyard, and then we have woods on our side of the aqueduct. So when you approach the, where the off-leash walking area would be, it's near to the aqueduct. But once they're off-leash, that's up into the, or the groundwater, not what's the groundwater three zone, we kind of use that as a line.
Yeah.
Where, where we can put a fencing up there for about sixty feet.
So this is a perfect time to take dogs out, but now I'm thinking, like, what if, you normally have clients that you do Monday through Friday, and it's rainy, it's blizzards, what do you do in that, are you building structures to keep them in, or would you keep them?
Just around.
So?
Block the rains, late snow, or heat, as long as it's safe to be on the roads.
Okay.
As long as I can say that it's safe on the sun.
Okay.
So.
So you would be out?
I brought my shovel to the park.
Okay. But you'd probably be out there for some length of time, so highly unlikely, you know? It would probably be a shorter day for you if it was a snowy day, right?
Oh, well, typically, like, if we've had a big blizzard.
Yeah.
Then we'll cancel hikes for that day.
Okay.
By the next day, we're back out there. You know, the dogs trample down most of it.
Okay.
You know? We may have four, like.
Yeah. Okay. That's all for now.
Erin?
So you mentioned you had one employee now, but you look to have three to four, but your application says six to ten. So how many employees do you think you're gonna have?
I think probably six to eight employees. What I mean to say is, we have, we would have a maximum of five vans. So in other words, there could really only be four people other than myself driving those vans at any given time. I currently have three animals using two.
Okay. And?
The other people would take, or some of the other people that would be on set would be to assist.
Okay. So, but you would ask for on your application sixteen? And how many dogs walk with each employee? Like you said cyclically, you go around in circles, but how many dogs are with each employee? How many dogs come in the van?
Sure. Yeah, we strive for five, that seems to be the number. I take in as many as twelve when I didn't know better. And I'll tell you, it's really, you know, there's a lot of talk about people that are dog walkers that have a group size, and if you're walking at the park and you see a group of six dogs, you can be very intimidated.
Okay.
So, which is, which is a big reason why I want to do what we're doing. It's actually an asset. We're separate from going to a park, so right now, we're not.
I think four, over four and under eight, you need a commercial permit, right, to be a dog walker? I saw that on the state website.
So for DCR sites?
Yep. Okay. Do you have any commercial dog walking licenses?
I've got none.
Okay. All right. So if you have five dogs and five vans, does that mean there could be twenty-five dogs on site at one time?
It's highly unlikely, but yes.
Yeah.
I'd say that's very highly unlikely. Probably be more like fifteen to eighteen maybe? Because we'd be at different points in the park, it's a loop.
Right.
So I stagger this, and when we do our walks during the day, now, we stagger them as well. So I'll start, we'll, we'll start.
Okay. And you're gonna be fenced off, but will you also walk out onto the conservation land, or is your business gonna stay just on your property?
Well, I certainly would want to keep it on my property. You know, if there's some reason that I would have to go out and walk them, it would be a situation.
Okay, I just didn't know if your, your fence is gonna cover the whole end, so you're gonna keep the dogs and walking loops on your property? You're not gonna have like a gate in the back where you walk up?
No, I'm not allowed to. Yes, and actually, the town has been very helpful with at least putting together the application and basically can and can't do. And I was informed that you can actually walk through the conservation land to access a, I'm sorry, I'm getting this wrong, can access a conservation, use conservation land to access a commercial business, which is the whole reason.
Right.
I have to put my own bridge over the creek, because I can't use the conservation bridge to go up to my backyard.
Okay. So you're gonna just stay on your property? And I think you answered this, but this use will just be for you, you won't, like, allow other dog walkers to come on site and walk their dogs? Because I think somewhere in the application, I saw that possibly there could be other dog walkers.
I have asked for that permission to have, to allow other professional dog walkers to assist.
Okay. So on top of your employees and vans, there could be other dog walkers up top?
Well, and my thinking was, is that if I were to end up operating, because it's sort of fluid, like, I don't know exactly how it's gonna be, because I can't predict the future, but if, if I want to keep it more minimal with myself and only three vans, then maybe someone could be allowed to use two that does the same thing that I do. But they'd be subject to whatever rules that I have for the, for the park, as far as keeping the dogs safe and staggering them.
So they, they would take your vans and be insured under you?
No, they would use their own vans and be insured under their own insurance, I suppose. I guess they're really owned up completely, other than my property would be insured, and they would be insured, they would be contracted by me to operate under my business, and they would have their own business.
So you'd just charge like a fee if another dog walker wanted to come up and?
Maybe, I don't know. I guess I kind of just put that in there because I have friends that have kind of gone through the same thing since wildlife, the wildlife rules passed, so it's kind of like, well, hey, maybe we can find a place that, you know, will allow professional walkers, and then people that don't like dogs will interact with people that do like dogs, and we'll just have our own place.
I guess for like, what I'm trying to envision is how many, like, we said twenty-five dogs, if you have five in five vans, but if other dog walkers are coming, there could be more dogs?
I would limit it. So I, yeah, no, because I only have six spaces on my plan, and I really only intend to getting up to five vans. It's just an extra, in case I have an extra employee that's coming to work to assist. So we've talked about it, we don't want any more than five vans, so if there were five vans over there, it would be like three of mine, and two of somebody else's, or four of mine, or one of somebody else's. But honestly, most of the people that are doing what I've done, that I know have stopped going, really do, and decided not to. It's unfortunate.
Yeah. Okay. So you talked about boarding, you thought there'd be one or two dogs boarded, and they'll be boarded inside your house. And will you have any retail sales? Like, say, you're not gonna be selling leashes or collars to people who come and?
That's a good idea. I don't thought, and I never thought, I never thought of that. It's funny, because I was a retailer, ran a CVS store before I started my business, so I don't want to think of that, but no.
I'm just trying to picture the business, yeah.
Yeah. No, I kind of like what we do. Maybe if I could offer a product idea, I'd come back and say I just know what.
Okay. So I guess for Kathy, I have questions, or for Fred, this is gonna come in front of groundwater?
Yep.
And conservation?
Yep.
And does it go in front of the Board of Health?
No.
Because there's a lot of dog waste and?
Wait, it doesn't go before the Board of Health?
No.
But kennels do, so if we had more dogs?
Yeah, it's not a kennel. So kennel is when you have over three dogs that you want to keep at, you know, at your house, or anywhere in the business at night. So this is, I mean, it would be, you know, you didn't apply to be a kennel.
So is there any type of animal control supervision or overseeing on this? Like, if I have?
From the town?
Just out of curiosity.
No.
Okay.
I have to say, I don't plan on, I don't live as any close with the town, but I plan on giving both the police department and animal control key to my backyard, so I don't know if that helps at all. So if they need to get in there for any reason, because safety issues can come up, it's a woods. So safety issues can come up, so if somebody needs to access my backyard, they're gonna be able to.
And you're gonna have waste cleaned out? Like you said, you're gonna?
Definitely.
Yeah.
Waste, yeah.
Right. And so do you?
More poop that you could possibly?
Do you have a service? Because I did read about another company that does this, and they have a service that comes in and collects the?
I used to, so when I first started, I tried that, in fact, my website totally updated, but, but we tried it for a while, and it just kind of turned out that it was too time-consuming for people to call, like, and it was all over the place, and I just couldn't find it, it was more important to care for the dog, right?
Oh, not for you, but do you have a service that comes and picks up your poop from your yard? Not on your yard, but the trash? Like, there's a place in Natick that did it, and they had, there's, I forgot the name of it, it's like Cooper Scooper, and they come and they empty the trash and bring, they they?
Oh, are you talking about disposal, like, from the property?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we pick up the poop, we put it in trash cans, and then we currently leave it in the down trash cans, whatever else does it, when they come and they take it away. I actually have been in touch with Republican Services, and they're looking into, but they're not sure of the case, but they can actually recycle horse manure, so they're, they're looking into whether they can do that with dog waste as well, which I think would be really cool. I think some might, and I should be coming down it as well. But otherwise, it would just be removed, probably by the public services.
So, once a week, is that something?
Once a week.
Okay.
We would empty our home bins twice a week.
Yeah.
You know, like, considering how many bins from?
Right.
For days? We don't like the smell of them there. So, and then, but then we would have it come and, and, you know, have it picked up.
Okay. I think those are all my questions.
But I don't have it as been in the plan, and I'm gonna present that to the board.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So I have some questions as well. Based on the number of vans and employees and coming in and out, do you have an estimate of the impact of traffic on that street in terms of what you estimate peak time, what that traffic looks like in the neighborhood?
I do, I thought about that a lot. You know, in my estimates, I have, at the high end, it would be forty-two and an ounce per day. And below, it's about thirty-four. And that includes my wife coming in, going to work, probably out doing errands. So if you figure, the way I broke it down is if I have six to eight employees coming to work, and leaving work, then it'd be twelve to sixteen an ounce per day. And then if I, if I have five, five vans max operating twice a day, which would be two times between, right, so it's times four, twice in, twice out, or twice out then twice in. And then our personal vehicles, two to six times per day. So it'd be about thirty-four to forty-two per day.
Okay.
On the high end.
And that road, is that a double-line road, or just a regular?
Just a regular.
Just a regular road?
Yep.
Okay. In terms of the exit to the parking lot, so that there's a parking lot here, and then people will exit out of your existing driveway, it merges in with that?
Yes.
And then what's across from your driveway? Is there a home there?
Yes.
Okay. So in terms of when it gets dark at four o'clock, and there are forty, twenty, well, what was the highest, thirty-four cars coming in and out, is there, do lights go into the house across the street? With headlights?
House, so.
And then, no?
I could ask for help, I think so, though.
Okay, so?
They're a little offset from where we are.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be exiting thirty-four to forty-two. That would be in the evening, and they're leaving in the evening, it'd be about four o'clock, and it'd be whoever's working at the service, five, six people leaving.
Okay. So then you have the parking lot itself, and it looks like that's in line with the street going straight across, I'm just looking at this drawing?
Yes.
Is that, okay. And is there any landscaping in between, like some sort of buffer, visual, like?
A lot.
So you can't even see where this park, so if I were to be on the road, I couldn't see it?
So you can from the driveway, it's out, I would say maybe about two hundred feet from the street?
Mm-hmm.
To get back to where, maybe a little bit more, because you cross the aqueduct, and it's over kind of a way, so if you look way out, you can see the road, but along the aqueduct, there's all, it's really big Japanese bamboo.
Okay, so you wouldn't, so if there are houses across from the parking lot, and lights are going on and off with all the vans?
Oh, I see what you're doing, I'm sorry.
There's the, there's a visual buffer in between?
Yeah, there's all, there's all the vans, and then there's the, there's the, there's the, there's the, there's the. Right.
So there's no homes directly across from this parking lot that?
Directly across from the parking lot, yes, but there's, there are all the foliage that we have, then the aqueduct, then person's backyard, the trees, then their house.
Okay. So a car could, could turn on the lights, and they would be none the wiser, they wouldn't even really be able to see it? Even in the winter, when the trees, are they evergreens, or?
Um, I, they may be able to see it, I guess, through their backyard, the trees, but?
But it's not, they're like, front of their house is not facing?
Oh, I took a picture, it's like, hold on.
Oh, great.
I can actually show you if it, yes, yeah, it's powering up.
That's okay. All right, well, that's powering up then. So then, in the wintertime, there's no visual, is there anything in front of the parking lot that would visually hide it?
Um, not on our property, because I think the Japanese bamboo dies off.
Okay.
I think the previous owner did, like, burn piles with it, it went back, so that, so I think it dies off.
Okay. And then?
But I really don't know.
This is a straightaway here, so there's not like a curve or anything like that, so if there are lots of cars coming in and out, there's no like danger or sight vision, line of vision issues with people coming out of the parking lot, if they were taking turns left or right? Like, what's the traffic pattern look like?
Only if you kind of go out on the street, it's kind of, the street, oh, I can actually show you now.
Or is it curved?
If you kind of, if you come up from Hudson Street, so if you go through the aqueduct, and you make a left on Allen Street, and you go up, it splits, and Rice Avenue goes this way, and Rice Avenue goes this way.
Yeah.
So it does split, and then the trailhead for Edmunds Hill is right here on the left. My house is over there on the right, and it's the only house that's on the trail, and every other trail that's on the trails. So, yeah, it's kind of, it's, I think it's a little wonky coming out of the driveway, but I have a clear vision as you're pulling out. I've never had an issue with having vision pulling out of the driveway.
Okay, but if there are lots of vans coming out?
But if you fly around the bend, coming down past the, on Rice Avenue, past the park, going out towards where the power plant, the sub-plant is, they kind of fly down that hill, so there's that risk, I guess, but, no, there is, there is a stop sign up there.
Okay.
I think there's supposed to be a stop.
Yes. Okay. And then, in terms of the impact on municipal resources, so the amount of waste generated, that is something that you don't envision being any more impactful than any other residential home, or?
More impactful than a residential home, yes. There's a lot more, because we, when we go to the park every day, we're constantly picking up not only our dogs' waste, but also other people that we see on the trail. Not because I'm Snow White and I like to pick up everybody else's dog waste, but number weight, number one weight, it's easy to transport the dogs, eating it. So, which is really gross, but it's true. So it's really not only, it's a health concern for the dogs. So, and honestly, I don't like stepping in, I don't like other people stepping in it. So, and I really like the environment, so for me to pick it up, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. And then, traffic-wise?
I'm gonna try to?
Yeah, sure, that'd be great.
So, where you see my son's slide here, kind of behind it is the parking area, then over here is the driveway, that we have that goes across the aqueduct?
Mm-hmm.
Can you see that? And this is all that Spanish bamboo that I was telling you about?
Mm-hmm.
Or Japanese bamboo. And then over there, where these, these high-voltage cables are, that's where the aqueduct is. And then on the other side, those trees you see on the other side are in the backyards of the neighbor, and then their house would be beyond those trees.
Okay.
So where's the parking lot gonna be? Right in that open space?
So the parking lot would be kind of like right in that, right, yeah, right kind of back here would be where it starts. So my driveway that comes into the residence is over here, and then the parking area would be kind of a, and then, how was anything else that's helpful? This is a visual from the walking path, that would walk down to where you cross the bridge, up, and you can see that's the aqueduct that divides. It's a nice natural sound barrier.
Okay.
Does anybody else want to see the picture that she's?
Oh, I saw, thanks, yeah.
And then, just in terms of traffic, how would you describe that street? It's a residential neighborhood, so this is a significant change to the other business of residential neighborhood. How would you, just, can you speak to maybe the difference in traffic in terms of, is it similar to what you see there now? Is it a busy road anyway? Is it a quiet street? What is it?
I would say in the mornings, probably about seven-thirty or so, when my wife's up earlier, when we get up, it's kind of like the Autobahn. People use it as a cut-through. But when I'm operating, it's not busy at all, because most people are at work already, so I think people are just rushing to get to work. And then in the evening, once again, it kind of, whoever's, I'm taking a lot of the junk, but, but people are using it frequently to get home. So we usually operate when there's nobody around.
Okay. Okay, I think that was all the questions that I had. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I did. I noticed on the hours of operations, it was sunrise to sunset, which, you know, in June, that can be, you know, five AM to, you know, eight PM. And then in the wintertime, you know, it could be, you know, four PM is sunset. So is that because of most of your business is outside, that it's really driven by how much daylight you have? Or do you want to be more definitive when you go to the ZBA?
I'd be more definitive with ZBA.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's really more, I would say it's more eight-thirty. If there's a day that I'm done after four o'clock, it's probably a long day.
Yeah.
Because if you think about it, when we go to, generally, people's work days are from about, they live about seven in the morning, or six, six-thirty, seven at night, maybe a little earlier. We try to get to the dogs twice in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so it's more like eight-thirty to, to four o'clock, I'd say.
Yeah.
You can put that.
Yeah, I would probably, I mean, that's certainly a question, I think the ZBA will ask you.
Okay.
And, you know, I think the residents would probably want to know that someone's not gonna be there really early in the morning, but it makes sense that you'd probably be there between like eight to five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And five days a week, or seven days a week?
It's five.
So dogs boarding there, and then you might walk them back there, but it's not gonna be like a free-for-all.
Yeah.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, yeah.
Okay. So it's not a hearing, but I will allow for comments if you just direct them to me, not directly to the applicant, or to the board. I would, that would be best. If anybody is, has any comments about the project and would like to speak?
Carrie, can I ask you a couple?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
I just, because this is the revised plan, just today, I, Chris, I just want to clarify, the, the area that you're walking the dogs is in this fenced-in area.
Yeah, well, when we're, when we're getting, so we're going from the parking area?
Yeah.
The parking area, that's about the gate, and then there's a little area that's down to the buffer zone?
Yeah.
Conservation, protection of the wetlands?
Yeah.
That also has a gate, and I would call that like a waiting area?
Yeah.
So like, if I'm starting with my dog, I would wait until I see that that's clear, and then my associate would wait there until we go. We walk them leashed through that area to another gate on the other side?
Okay.
At which point, once they're in there? At which point, once they're in there, they go through our fenced area up on the trails, uh, in, uh, is that next to the, up to the trails on the loop?
Okay, so, so, uh, so yeah, that, that's what I'm just confused on, so I just want to clarify that for me. So they, so you originally, you start the dogs in this fenced-in area? Um, and then, once you, you come up to, you know, probably about halfway up your property, then you'll, because I noticed on, on the other plane, you had like a, a, you know, a larger fenced-in area?
Yes, it is actually, it's, um, because it was outside the groundwater zone, I didn't put the blessing on there, but...
Okay, so then, so then out, then after that, you then take the dogs out of the fenced-in area, and you'll, and you'll walk them around the rest of your property? Or are they just walking in this fenced-in area?
So, outside the fenced area from the parking lot to where the off-leash area is, is the only place that they would be leashed? Unless they're just eating or something, but it's the only place that they would be leashed. They would only be walked on the, in the portion of the property that's fenced.
Oh, okay, so, so you're really, you're not utilizing all your property to have the dogs?
Oh, oh, right.
Walking around? They're going to be on the...
Plus, yes, no, about, like, six, six to eight acres, I would say.
Okay.
So, the, so what I found is, speaking to some of the residents locally, you know, some people tell me, look, we've been using this conservation area for many, many years, and using the trails, and, you know, I could fence off that upper area because it's our property, but it's beautiful up there, I wouldn't want to take that away from people. You know, so I'm trying to maybe where I can divide the trail that's already there?
Yeah.
So people can use it on the outside?
Yeah.
And then we can use it on the inside of the fence? You know, so it goes up to sort of the top of the hill?
Yeah.
Comes back down. And then that other portion, we're not really sure what we're going to do with that?
Okay.
So on that, on the, on the, the really back far side of the property.
And then when the dogs are in the fenced-in area, they can just roam freely, right?
Well, we stay on the trails, but yes, they can. If they were, then that's the whole idea, is if they, for some reason, a dog were to get away from us, worst-case scenario is they're getting a fence.
Yeah, they're in the up, yes.
But they usually don't anyway. I just wanted to, I wasn't sure on that.
Okay, Fred, did you have anything?
I do.
Okay, any, no comments?
Yeah, I just have a question. I know the town has...
Carrie, do you have people identify themselves, their name and address?
Yes, please.
My name is Zia Ramadan, eighty-five Newton Street in Northborough. My question is, I mean, I have neighbors, and I know they're supposed, the dogs are supposed to be unleashed, but they don't leash them, and they're always in my backyard, and of course, I have to be nicely neighbor. I haven't known to report it to anybody, but I thought it was aggravating. My question is, everything you said is really nice and dirty, but in fact, if those dogs get loose sometime, what are the legal ramifications? Is there penalties? What is it that he can, that, you know, that he can be, you know, penalized for, for doing that, you know? I mean, if he said, if he's, that's what he said, I don't have a problem, as long as it's not bothering, but sometimes, all those dogs, and I know, I hired wonderful police, I told them to do something, but guess what? They don't listen to me, you know? Because most likely, these employees are not going to get much money. They're very, you know, maybe, because that's not a big business, you know, I mean, it's not a big problem. So my point is, what are the town, uh, legal application in terms of paying penalty in the event that dogs are loose and they bother the neighbor and things like that happen?
So Kathy, is there, just regular town law would apply no matter what?
Yeah.
So it would be whatever that's...
Yeah, from what I understand, the, the leash law in general in Northborough, and it's different from town to town, is that, is that the dogs actually, the dogs have to be under your command. So that can be voice command, or that can be on a leash law. I remember our animal control officer telling us that years ago. So, um, but then obviously, if your dog, you know, just like my dog, your dog, you know, trespasses, you know, somebody could call, um, you know, either the animal control officer or the police department.
Yeah, I think I remember at the Board's luckman meeting, when they were talking about Yalick, um, that property, that, the same question came up, what happens if a dog gets out of control? And it's basically...
It's one thing to have one dog, but if you're running a huge business, now the problem becomes, it's, if, if it's one time, you go to police and they take care of it, no problem, but if it's something that's occurring on a frequent basis and it's a big problem, that's, becomes a major issue.
Yeah. No, it's good feedback, thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, Justin Teal, I live on one fifty-four Rice Ave. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little prepared, I think, although we have chances in this case, but if you notice...
Oh, sure.
So I guess a couple of things, um, I'm not crazy about this, because it's, it's, this house is really the gateway into Edmund Hill Woods. Um, so if we have vans and a parking lot there, um, you know, that's kind of like putting a Starbucks into the gateway of like, you know, that, Boston. Um, it, it just, kind of doesn't really set the nice mood for, for a nature walk. I go running through the aqueduct and through Edmund Hill Woods a lot, and I can definitely see his property, I can see, I think where the parking lot is proposed, and I would at least be able to see the fence, I think where it proposed. Uh, again, I haven't, like, looked at the map in super detail, but you can definitely see it from the street, you can definitely see it from the aqueduct. There was a comment that was made about line of vision issues coming out of the driveway. So when I go for runs, that's actually my least favorite part of the run, because the road kind of narrows right there, and there's a little bit of a hill. Um, I've actually, almost been clipped by a car a couple times while I'm running, um, so I, I don't think it's fair to say that that's like an easy driveway to get out of. Another comment was made that kind of the road is like the Autobahn. Um, I'd say it definitely isn't. The reason I moved to this road was because it's a quiet road that abuts conservation money. Um, actually, when I drive to work, I almost never really have to pay that much attention to incoming traffic, because there's hardly anyone there. One other concern I have is that, uh, I guess I'm a little worried about the impact of the wildlife in the area. Um, so this area currently, I think, is not cleared, so we don't wipe out a bunch of trees and stuff, right, that's going to have an effect on the wildlife. The dog group, you know, you can try your best to pick it up, but you're still going to be raining, right, that rains between the time of dog groups, and you pick it up, there's going to have an issue there. And I guess the last comment I have, I, I, I think around the additional traffic that he was quoting, he was quoting for his own employees, and I just wanted to, I, I think, and I just want to make sure that, like, if this is approved, and they start talking about allowing other dog walkers to come in, I just want to make sure that that traffic is actually accounted for in, in this, because it sounded like it wasn't in the original proposal.
Thank you, and what I would do as well, is if you wanted to attend the ZBA hearing, there'll actually be the board approving the project, so, but we're happy to hear your comments, because we'll write a letter as well to the ZBA. Any other feedback? Yes?
Rick Keane, one fifty-nine Rice Ave, now, I was concerned about how many shuttles are you going to have? How many times are these shuttles going to be on the road? Rice Avenue's narrow, there are no sidewalks, you can barely get two trucks next to each other, and at any one time, there's constantly going to be a shuttle going back and forth. And I also moved to the area to get away from commercial businesses, I come home from work to get away from commercial businesses, and now there's going to be one right near my house, in an area that signs off the commercial business. That's my concern. There is a noise level factor, ten dogs, dogs make noises, I don't want it to sound like a race track up there. I have an issue with cars pulling in and out as well. That's a tricky corner, there is a stop sign there, Rice Avenue goes up, comes up from Allen Street, it's a little hairy without the constant traffic. So I'm just concerned about how many shuttles going back and forth all day, and the traffic faster, the noise faster.
Thank you. Any other feedback on the project? Nope? Okay, so again, for anyone who did have feedback, I would certainly recommend you attend the ZBA hearing, which is, that's September twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay, September twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Is the butters, I'm sure you have been notified, but if you're just in the area and didn't receive notification, that is, um...
I have a question, my name's Kathy, we live at the same residence, we're at one fifty-nine Rice Ave. Were we not supposed to be notified about this? I don't know how I've heard about this story.
So immediate butters are notified, and one fifty, you said one fifty-six?
Nine.
Oh, so you're on the list?
Oh, no, that's Cambridge. So you're going to be notified about the ZBA hearing? This is an applicant coming before the planning board? And then we'll hear him, and then we'll weigh in and give our feedback to the ZBA on making their decision. But we're not the permitting board. But often, we'll, we'll listen to what the ZBA is, is listening to the applicants, and often we'll give feedback if we feel like it's, you know, strong enough that, you know, we want to send a letter to the ZBA. That's probably why you didn't hear about tonight's meeting.
Were you talking about the ZBA hearing, or is this tonight?
No, she's talking about tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, you're absolutely right. So, yes.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
But the feedback is helpful in making our, our determination of what our letter will say to the ZBA.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Any other comments from the board?
Um, no, are we gonna...
Well, I was thinking, in the, um, whoops, in the name of time, and I think we have some other people waiting for other hearings, that maybe when we talk about the ZBA at the end, we could regroup a little bit and talk about what kind of letter we want to draft to the ZBA at that time.
Is that what you want, you want to, so we're gonna...
Yeah, if the board doesn't mind, if we carry on to other business, I think I see other, um, people who are here for...
Okay, so then we can give comments later, and we'll write a letter?
Yeah, yeah, at the end, okay. All right, so what we do is we, as mentioned, the ZBA is the one that does the, the hearing process, so we write a letter of recommendations of different things, like, that we either noticed or heard, or what we'd like the ZBA to consider as part of the hearing process. So we do that. Are they able to receive a copy of the letter, or? Okay, so you'll receive a copy as well. I think I heard you say you have a babysitter till seven-thirty as well, so it'll save the agreement. Okay, so you don't have to stay for that, or?
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you for your input. Okay, next, we have bonds, Newton Street update. Consideration, is this the same item, consideration of a bond reduction of thirty-five thousand? Okay.
So if I can just give you, um, a, you know, two-second overview, and, um, the developers here, we have Ramadan, and he'll talk more to use your site for a bond reduction. Um, there's a letter, um, in your packet, um, from, uh, a, a, a law firm called Lenny McNeera, and, um, so this, that, this was just the official, you know, letter. Anytime, uh, somebody, an applicant, you know, requests a bond reduction, um, he may have a, a letter sent in. So, um, basically, this is, um, the discussion, which I'm sure Mr. Ramadan will, um, will summarize, but, um, uh, his firm, uh, his attorney and town council, um, along with DPW, you know, have been involved in conversations about, you know, the status where Newton Street is. So I just wanted to let you know that we have the official letters to request the reduction, and then Mr. Ramadan can, can, uh, talk about that.
Okay, so that's you.
Since a couple of you are new, and you're not familiar with this, I'm going to give you the slides, the slide background. At Newton Street, uh, I have a large property, about thirty-five acres, about, about a half a mile of Newton Street. And, uh, about, I don't know, maybe ten years ago, I guess, I tried to, uh, get a, uh, a permit to get, it's a, the road is considered a, a scenic road, so I was trying to get a scenic access driveway to three, uh, eight lots, and, uh, the planning board said, uh, that I would have to improve Newton Street in order to get the scenic access, uh, before I would be able to sell the third house. So anyway, the year went past, and I built the house, and I finally had to do that, and so on. The thing is, the, the, the project was broken down into two phases in improving Newton Street. Phase one, which I did, and then phase two, before I did that, there was another developer across the street from me, who also was trying to do the same thing I did, and I gave to the planning board, well, you know, you should be fit, like, I'm being fit, and if I have to improve it, you have to improve it, you know? And of course, you're doing it. Uh, then I told him, I told him, look, I'm getting eight lots out of it, you're getting three lots, it's only fair that you pay three portions of the cost, and I pay each portion of the cost, to be fair to both of us. And he agreed to it, you know, just the proportion of what benefit we'll get for phase two. So I went ahead and built both of the work, uh, I spent several hundred thousand actually, and I had a huge bond with the town, and the town has reduced my bond to only left where it had a top coat left, and to put a, a guardrail, basically. But the, the developer never paid me a dime. He owes me fifty thousand dollars, never paid me anything. And what happened is, really, see, when you put the base board, you shouldn't wait too long for the top coat, otherwise you ruin it, and you have to put again. And that's what Fred believes, and the DPW, and I agree with them a hundred percent, I'm a civil engineer, absolutely. And my dilemma was, the minute this project is done, the person now is, he get, develop his lots, the road is done, and he never have to bring the fifty thousand. I'm actually trying to go against him legally, you know? And the other dilemma is, right now, because I was counting on the fifty thousand to really finish the project two years ago, you know? But right now, we're at a point where this road really has the top coat, has to be applied, there's no choice. And I had a catastrophe, I had a, a twenty-four condo that burned down, and we didn't have rent insurance, so cash, my cash flow is very bad, you know? So I had asked the DPW, I told them, look, I really agree with you, we really need to finish it, but I really cannot, I don't have the cash to physically pay for all of it. If you can at least, you know, reduce the thirty-five thousand, I can come up with the difference. It's going to cost fifty thousand to put the top coat, you know? And hold the fifteen thousand for the guardrail, which I'm going to use that at least, not to get it to develop his lot, to get something out of it. You know, because now he has to at least finish the guardrail to get something out, you know? So that's basically where I'm at. I'm looking to say that, provided that the top coat is applied, and it's acceptable, and approved by the DPW and Fred, then the thirty-five thousand will be released, so I can pay that paving contractor.
Okay. Fred, do you have anything to?
Um, that's pretty much all of it. As you recall, we had come to you a few months back and talked about, um, taking the bond. The DPW and engineering department were very concerned that the road was deteriorating from winter to winter, which was the way it is, and then the fifty thousand that was being held wouldn't be enough to complete the project. We were very concerned, and since Mr. Ramadan had been encouraged, we'll ask the woodworkers to put the top on, and his agreement with the other developer, which was not part of anything that the board or the town had anything to do with, it was a separate agreement between the two of them, as we envisioned it, Mr. Ramadan was responsible. Fifty thousand was for the remainder of the work, and it was his responsibility, and that other agreement was separate, and we were not involved, and, by design.
Okay.
And so we, we had, um, sent a letter to Mr. Ramadan, he then had his attorney contact the town. The two attorneys, the town's attorney and his attorney, um, talked back several, several times, the staff and Mr. Ramadan and his contractor met out there. They're ready to do the work, but they are very apprehensive about doing it unless they're sure that the thirty-five thousand will be released to them upon approval by the staff. So we're, we're, we're on board with that, it's not our typical process. We usually wait for the work to be done, we do an inspection, and I come to you and recommend for reductions. This case, it's a little tenuous, so there's nothing wrong with what he's, uh, asking us to do. Town council's okay with it, the attorneys will be, will withhold the letter saying that the money can be returned once we give approval. There's no pressure on the town to give approval for something that's not adequate, so, uh, seems like it's the best we're going to get at this point. We would like to see the whole project done, but the pavement, the tops of the pavement is the critical part at this time.
But there's more to be done.
The guardrail, and, uh, because the finalizing of the ground, uh, whose engineers already started to drop on.
Okay, and if it doesn't start before September twentieth, then what?
If it doesn't start before...
Well, just as it will complete, beginning, well, begin and complete the work as soon as possible before September twentieth?
Well, doesn't finish before September twentieth, um, we don't give them any money, and we still have the option of taking the fifty thousand and completing it ourselves. Our time is running out for paving of this, this construction season. We would have technically until, you know, mid-November that we could do it, so later it goes, the more tricky the weather gets, and the less, um, the lower quality job could be, could be a result, so. Mr. Ramadan and his contractor both assured us that they're ready to go to work, um, hopefully as soon as next week.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any comments or questions?
Is it thirty, it's thirty-five thousand dollars and a fifty thousand?
And, and the other developer, um, is, has a decision from the planning board, um, as does Mr. Ramadan, that, you know, he, um, occupancy permits won't be released for his three lots, um, until such time the road is, is completed according to the improvement plan. So he's, that, that decision is also, you know, still out there, valid, and, you know, the town is, you know, holding to that.
Okay, so this doesn't put us at risk, so we're not going to be stuck doing the job and releasing the money. It's only released if the job is done.
Only released if this portion of the work is completed satisfactorily to the DPW and the engineering department. No money gets released, even if you voted tonight, you voted contingent upon satisfactory report. No money gets released, even if you voted tonight. You voted contingent upon satisfactory report from them.
Okay. Okay, if there are no questions, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we release the thirty-five thousand contingent on the satisfactory report. Is that it, or planned?
Satisfactory performance of the work.
Satisfactory performance of the work.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, next we have consideration-
Long time, huh? Yeah, I know. Probably see you on September twentieth.
Um, consideration of minutes. Did we get August?
Uh, no, the, uh, we did not get August sixth, but, um, you got, uh, June seventeenth and July sixteenth.
Okay, I thought so. All right, so for the, starting with June seventeenth minutes, are there any changes to that?
Is this the June seventeenth, the joint meeting minutes? Is that?
Oh, no. Did I get them?
Yeah, June, yeah, June seventeen were, were the joint minutes.
Okay.
And then, um, July sixteen is, you know, a, a regular set of minutes. And I have comments from, um, very brief comments from Carrie and Amy.
Yes. And then the six eighteen minutes, we already approved last time.
Yes.
That's why I'm getting confused. Okay.
But you, but you don't have last month. You don't have your August sixth minutes yet.
Okay. All right.
Two seconds.
So, joint, the joint six seventeen minutes. Does anybody have any amendments to, I'm sorry, six seventeen? Yes, that's the joint. Does anybody have any amendments to that?
No. It's good.
So, then do these go back to the selectmen? Do they have to, or they'll just get amended and submitted?
Right, they'll, they'll be, they'll be sent to, if you approve them tonight, the way Elaine modified them, um, they'll be sent to the town clerk as, as the planning board's portion of, you know, from that, well, the planning board's portion is only the joint portion. So, it will be your set of minutes.
Yep.
Now, I know that Leslie, at the last selectmen's meeting, had asked to continue, that she didn't wanna, she wanted to continue. So, would it have to go back to the selectmen's just to close out with Leslie?
Well, the, the selectmen are, are modifying their minutes, or potentially modifying their minutes-
Oh, okay. So, they-
So, ours will just be separate.
And you are, yeah. So, so there will end up, there will end up being two sets of minutes for that evening.
Oh, okay. So, I thought this was gonna be put into theirs. No.
No, these are just ours.
These are just ours.
Right, and you had just asked for the deliberation, uh, portion-
Correct.
To be amended.
Yep. So, everything else is the same, but the deliberation is different.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so no changes to those minutes? Or, okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay, the minutes pass. Uh, then we have the July sixteenth minutes. And for this one, I had a couple of changes. I didn't bring them with me, but I know what-
I have, Carrie.
Oh, yeah, do you, sure.
Um, so Carrie, um, so Carrie had just made, um, uh, some, uh, two changes on page two of the minutes. I don't know if anyone has them.
Yes.
But, um, there was, um, a sentence that starts off with, uh, Mr. Sullivan explained that the applicant's main question is about the duplex, since it has been a bone of contention with this board in recent months. And that, um, change, the revision is after, is about the duplex, since in his opinion, it has been a bone of contention with the board in recent months. So, to, to add, it's in his opinion. And then, on the last page, um, actually, I think that just ended up being a typo.
It was just a typo, yeah.
So, I'll, I'll fix that typo. And then Amy, um, had a change, um, on page two of the, of the minutes. So, if you go, um, three, so, you know, they're not real paragraphs, but three paragraphs up, and then it's the last sentence of the fourth paragraph up, where it says, "Miss Kerensky agreed and cross out voiced her preference." And then said, stated that she wasn't voting, but if they wanted to play it safe, they could choose, excuse me, cross out the word "for", and the development of four A and R lots, as that, as that's what is allowed.
Okay. Would anyone, any other, okay, would anyone like to make a motion to?
I guess I meant to say, as, that's what's allowed for our bylaws. I didn't know. I did that really quick today, if it makes sense. Cause that's what I, I went back and listened to the tape, and then I did say that I wasn't voting, but I would recommend, you know, if they wanna play it safe, they can, uh, go with the four A and R laws, A and R lots, because that's what's allowed for our bylaw. So, either way, as long as that makes sense, what I said.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oops.
Anyone?
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Um, let's see. So, in looking at our agenda, what, Kathy, could you please remind me, the schedule for the next master plan steering committee meeting is the eighteenth?
Um, no, the September nineteenth is the, is the next steering committee meeting. And, um, and at that meeting, um, the focus is going to be on the implementation plan. And that's going to be, um, emailed out to the, um, steering committee tomorrow.
Okay.
And, um, and then, and, and again, that's the, that's the focus of that meeting on the nineteenth. And then on October twenty-fourth, that's the, just to give you the whole picture, that will be the presentation of the master plan to, to the community. And so, all the boards and commissions will be invited, and, you know, residents, businesses. Um, so that's at the library on October twenty-fourth. And then within that meeting, that's when your public hearing will also, you know, be running, so to speak. So, I'll advertise that, you know, as, as a planning board public meet, uh, excuse me, public hearing that night.
And that's the twenty-fourth of September?
October.
October?
October twenty-fourth, yep. And then on, um, um, this is, this is just a, a, another update. The steering committee has just provided updates, um, to the board of selectmen. And so, um, they'll be doing that, the chair will be doing that on September twenty-third. But that's just, that's just part of the selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
So, so steering committee, September nineteenth.
And that's where, gonna be where?
At the library.
It is at the library, okay.
Both of them will be at the library. So, that is September nineteenth, and then October twenty-fourth. Now, willing to bring another steering committee meeting in between there, there may be, um, you know, it just depends on how much the committee gets through.
Did we ever get the full draft? Like, I never got a copy of that yet.
No, no, you don't have that yet.
Oh, that's coming out?
Yeah.
Is that tomorrow, too?
No, no, you're just getting the, the implementation plan. The full draft, you, you've actually already had that, the whole base analysis. And, um, but, you know, we'll, we send it out, but-
When did we get that? The very, very beginning?
Uh, yeah.
Like, a year and a half ago?
Yeah.
I mean, I still have it.
Yeah.
I just don't know if it's changed at all.
No, no, no. So, they, so, you know, I'm just going through it as far as, just to make sure that all the maps are, um, you know, correct, that, because there, we're using state maps through the mass GIS, um, system. And so, we're just double checking those maps in-house, you know, each department that's involved with it. You know, there's, I mean, numbers haven't changed, that, you know, I mean-
None of the wording and-
Or anything. I mean, you'll, you'll get it, but it's not, you won't, you'll get, you'll get it in between those meetings. But the focus is, you haven't seen the implementation chapter yet, and that's what the focus on the September nineteenth.
So, none of the wording has changed in the draft at all? Only, you're only looking at maps?
No, I'm going through the whole thing, but that's, you know, the, it's the same language as, you know, as before.
Well, I think I found something before that I, that needed, it was, might be a typo, or it, maybe it's had another town's name in it. So, I'll go back and look, just so it's updated, unless we're gonna get it.
Um, yeah, you'll, you'll, you will get it.
Yeah.
I just don't remember. I've just been so focused on the simple implementation plan.
Right, right.
Cause we've been reviewing it in-house, and then now it's going to the steering committee.
Yeah.
So, um, so, yeah, you'll, you'll be getting the, the, the document.
Okay.
But, um, but not for the nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay, so, Michelle, if we had a half an hour to, to go through the land use and housing, do you think that's enough time to?
We can start with housing first, and then land use. I do, I don't have my stuff on land use, that's why.
I, I, I did, um, some extra-
Thank you. Kathy, when you talked about the implementation going through in-house and then to the steering, you're, you're talking about the master plan committees. What do you mean, the steering, right?
Yeah, what did I say?
I just said steering, but I, I assume you-
Oh, yeah, I was the master plan steering committee.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we officially talk about.
MPSC, okay. Okay.
Okay, so how about we figure we'll spend up to a half an hour on however far we get. Housing, fine, let me stop at housing. Just so we can get through the agenda. I wanna make sure we have enough time for everything. Does that sound okay with the board, or?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Okay, and I, and so Anthony wasn't able to make it tonight. He had a family emergency, so I still have his comments from last time as well. So, I can represent those if applicable.
Okay.
Okay, so housing.
Housing. So, I would say, and I'm sure Amy and Kathy would probably agree, and probably most of the members of the committee, that overwhelmingly consistently across the board, when we were talking about housing, that affordability was right on the top. And it came pretty much through either, um, our senior community, which is, I've lived in the community for so many years, but I can't afford to go, you know, sell my house for five hundred and have to buy something for five hundred. So, it was, meaning five hundred thousand. So, it was more like, how do you start looking forward to affordable housing, which I think the committee started talking about the inclusionary bylaw, bringing that back. We had that at one time. Um, it is something that you clearly need all of your boards to be on board with. And so, we, you know, it might be a discussion that's worth having on the planning board about bringing back the inclusionary bylaw, and then, uh, talking to, with the ZBA about it, and then also, you know, pulling in other, you know, like board of selectmen and stuff like that, making sure everyone is on board with it. Um, and then, you know, bringing it to town meeting. It's clearly something that you would ask for. I, I don't know, Kathy, if you can do this, but if someone was asking for a variance, I don't know what, and the variance is, or waivers, if you could ask for affordable housing and that. Or is it just if you build X amount of units, if you build, you know, five units, one has to be affordable, you know, um, so-
Yeah, that's what, that's what inclusionary zoning is.
Yeah, is more-
And it, and also, too, part of the master plan was about reinstating or reinvigorating the housing partnership.
The housing partnership, yeah. So, um, I think that's, and I think it's worth discussing, um, either this fall or sometime over the winter, about the inclusionary zoning bylaw. It, it took quite a while. I mean, would we use our own, our older one, or we create a new inclusionary bylaw? Because the old one seemed pretty good. We spent a lot of time with it.
Um, well, but, but the, um, I, I mean, you, you know, it can always be used as a, as a base.
Yeah.
It's pretty, you know, the length, um, but it, I mean, there's, there's better ways to do it than how we did it originally.
Yeah. So, we'd probably talk to, look to Kathy's guidance on how we would do it. But being on the board as long as I've had, we worked, um, I think, at least a year on it, implemented it. Um, we were able to get some units out of it, and then, um, it wasn't, I don't know why, we took it out of the zoning bylaw, but-
Well, the, the, the threshold was so, um, uh, there, there was no incentive for-
Yeah.
For a, an applicant to use it.
Okay.
So, the, the incentive, you know, because what, there has to be a trade-off.
Right.
So, you, there's a density bonus that's allowed, and then the trade-off is that, you know, the, the community, um, you know, gets affordable units out of it.
Right.
So, the density bonus was not-
Right.
There's no incentive, you know, wasn't worth it.
Right. So, the density bonus that triggered that last one that we used was the over fifty-five on Lincoln Street. So, that triggered a density, and that's where we got the four units out of that. But I'm not quite sure we had the inclusion bylaw with that one. That was-
The inclusionary zoning bylaw was already gone.
Gone by then?
Uh, yeah.
Yep. So, but that's the last time I remember getting any affordable, because there was, that was the most dense project that we had. And that was actually probably ten years ago, wasn't it? Longer, yeah. So, Kathy's right. In order to get it, you need density. So, there's a give and take. The developer comes and says, "I wanna do X amount of units," and you said, "Okay, if you do, one has to be affordable." So, that, you need to either have a subcommittee or somebody start to look into how you can bring back the inclusionary bylaw. And with that, it means density. And so, you have to think, you know, is that something that you want to, um, you know, you're gonna have developers come to you and say, you know, "I'm willing to give it, but I need more density." And that was an issue where some of the board members didn't like. So, um, so that's one part that really came to the forefront of most of the discussions, is how do you make more affordable housing in the town? The other part was that we talked about more diversity in housing. Um, we didn't touch a lot of what the different types would be, but just that there should be more diversity housing. And, other than that-
For me?
Like, I keep on going back to the affordability, cause that seemed to be the most predominant thing that came out of the discussion of housing. It'd always come back to the affordability part.
Um, for me, too, some of it, and I'm, I don't wanna go back and beat a dead horse, but back to the missing middle, like, it says identify appropriate areas for missing middle. I almost want a definition for, what do we mean by missing middle? Like, I still don't-
Yeah, there's-
Get what we're trying to do with missing middle.
Yeah.
It's in our, it's in our master plan, though.
Yeah, there, it's, it's going to be defined. There, there's a, I think, I don't know, one of the steering committee meetings, there was a bunch of, um, you know, phrases that have been used, that the, the group asked for, you know, the, a definition to be added.
But as a planning board member, cause we're looking at this as housing in the future, what if we don't like the definition? What if we get the definition of missing middle, and we say, "Well, that really doesn't work with what we were trying to get out of the master plan"?
Um, well, I mean, you, we're, you know, the consultants aren't making it up. I mean, it's a, it's a standard term that's used in planning and, and land use.
Right, but different things work for different towns. I just wanna make sure it works for our town.
Well, mi- and the missing middle is, you know, the, the, the definition is whether it's here, or Ohio, or, you know, Virginia. I mean, it's still the same-
What is it?
Definition. Um, well, I can, I'll, I'll, I can send you what, what they said.
Yeah, I'd be interested, just cause it, we're calling for it, and I just, I guess I still don't get what missing middle is and what we plan on doing with it. And, um, another thing, for the price points, H two dash one, and I know Rick was really into the price points, but as a, as a planning board member, do you know of any other towns that have done this price points? Like, when I talked to Rick in the hallway one day, he said, "We need to do these price points, cause we need cheaper housing for people." And I went back home, and I went to the assessors' list, and the average home in Northborough at that time, I don't know if it's changed, this is probably back in January, the average home in Northborough was four hundred and eight, that, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The average home in Massachusetts is four hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, I thought, okay, Northborough sounds right on target. And then, out of all the homes, when I went through the board of assessors, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six of our homes were under five hundred thousand. So, then I went back to Rick, and I said, "Well, what do you mean by affordable housing, when, you know, it seems like we're right on target as a town?" And he said to me, "We need houses that are two hundred thousand." And I said, "Well, you can't even get land for two hundred thousand." And, um, he thought, develop, we could donate land to developers, so they could build the houses cheap, and we can sell them for two hundred thousand. And I think that's a gr- you know, it's nice of him to do, but is it something that, you know, do people go through and have other towns do this housing price points? To get houses at two hundred thousand, it seems like, that's, I don't know. To me, I felt like, as a town, we're pretty good, cause we're meeting the average, and we do have a lot of houses under five hundred thousand. But I feel like trying to get houses for two hundred thousand, who's gonna bear the brunt of the cost of that? And it seems like a lofty goal in our master plan. But once it's in the master plan, cause I used to read the master plan- But once it's in the master plan, because I used to read the master plan all the time, I'd say, well, this is the master plan, I wanna do this. So if we approve this on the master plan, is someone gonna walk in and say, okay, we're gonna do a housing price point study, and now you have to build us homes for two hundred thousand dollars? Like I don't find that would be an easy goal to do. I don't know, has anyone ever heard of housing price points being done in another town? And I know Rick's really into affordable housing, and I think it's.
Well, so who would do the study?
Because I was actually.
And how would you pay for the study? Did you?
You, um, well, as it was discussed at the steering committee, the, um, and, and you all voted to put this in as steering committee. You voted to put this in as a recommendation and a goal. So the, um, I mean, there's, you know, there's methodologies, you know, various methodologies as far as finding your, your, you know, what's considered a price point. So, I mean, it's a very common thing, it's, I mean, it's housing analysts will, will do it, or, you know, housing pol- you know, housing policy people. So, um, I think when you, you know, when you go to the implementation chapter, which again, you know, you're getting tomorrow, I believe that this is one of the things for, you know, the housing partnership to spearhead, and then, you know, they would do the research, you know, or, you know, hire consultants to do the research, and then, um, you know, come back to, you know, the planning board, the Board of Selectmen. You know, is this something that the town, you know, wants to, you know, um, you know, get, get involved with, and as far as the, you know, the development of, of, you know, the, one possible method, there are many methods, but one possible method is, you know, other towns have, have done this, we tried to do this years ago, but where you, um, take town on land, and, you know, you put out an, an R F P, or Request for Proposal, and that the Request for Proposal talks about, you know, various price points of, of what types of housing needs to be built, and how they're being restricted, and, um, and then the, the, the trade-off for the developer is that they don't have the land costs. The, you know, the town may be donating, or, you know, providing the land at, at a minimal cost. But that's, you know, that is so far down the line.
Would that be voted on at town meeting? Because to me, something like that, I would think.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, any, any disposal of, of land at a town, I mean, that's stupid.
Okay, because to me, yeah, it seems like a lofty goal.
So, but who, where does the budget come from to hire that consultant, is that?
Oh, you, they have to be, you know, go through, well, depending on, on what the price of the project is, I mean, just like, the majority of these goals, you know, have dollars attached to them, of course, in the implementation plan.
Oh, so the implementation plan will outline how much things cost as well?
It, it doesn't give a, a, a dollar value, because, you know, today's, you know, what you pay for something today versus, you know, five years from now is gonna be different, you know, as far as hiring consultants.
Well, that's true, that's true, I'm just thinking like.
But it, but it's, um, the plan is, the, the, the chapter is rated that, um, you know, it's, uh, you know, like one dollar sign, two dollar signs, three dollar signs. So you just get to see whether something is, you know, um, uh, in, inexpensive to, to expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, you know, the majority of these goals are gonna have to be worked into the capital plan, um, for the community. Um, and that's, you know, a six-year, uh, plan that, that, you know, the town evaluates and, and, you know, participates in every single year, when it comes to capital projects.
Okay. Okay, so. Did you have other comments on this section?
No, I guess that's it. As long as we go into it in greater detail, because I think you talked about it, but we didn't really, like, even as steering committee, to go through this plan, it was like, okay, we gotta get through this in a half an hour, let's, you know, go, go, go.
So missing middle was never defined?
No.
But, so it was voted on without really defining it?
Right, because everybody was always in a rush. I feel like, I feel like we talked about things, but we were all sort of like, we have to get through this tonight. And so some of the things I feel like need a little more discussion. I mean, maybe not with the master stand, plan steering committee, but if it comes in front of the planning board.
Missing middle was talked about, it's probably like, at least three master plan steering committee meetings, and it, and it was discussed what it is. And, um, they had a, you know, a, a PowerPoint presentation one night, and they had definitions for missing middle. And, um, and then there was some follow-up questions, and they were gonna put that as the base analysis. That's, that's what I recall.
Okay, so I actually did attend some of these, and I remember a lot of the master plan steering committee members saying they really didn't understand it. And in fact, they didn't understand a lot of these terms, so that would be interesting to pursue, like really understanding them before we make them. You know, they were joking about it, not in a bad way, they're certainly smart and capable, but just in a way like, I don't even know what half these things mean, kind of funny way. Which, you know, for us being in this position, I think it's important, we certainly understand it before we put any sort of zoning in place to support it. A couple of questions I had, and I don't know if this was feedback that the committee received. So in some cases, uh, you mentioned the seniors and affordability. Did you feel that there was conversation about, um, seniors wanted to stay where they were, and just not have it be as expensive, or they really wanted to downsize and leave their homes and find somewhere less expensive in Northborough?
So I don't think that there was, aging at home was part of the discussion.
Okay.
I don't think that was. And I think if you did an aging at home, um, at that point, it would be, you know, how to reduce my taxation, and that's more of a Board of Selectmen issue. So I don't think aging at home was a discussion, it was more like, you know, I've, I want to get to a smaller place, but the smaller places aren't available. Because when you see when they build, um, over fifty-five communities, they only can be, they're almost like small mansions, just in a smaller size, so. You know, it was like, how do you make almost like a cottage style, a much smaller style? And so I think that was it. I think what's important about H one is, H one dash one is the first time where they talk about affordable senior housing, but using parcels that currently exist. So maybe there's a building, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say we're gonna use it, you know, but you've got Old Town Hall building out front, right? What if all of a sudden, that came into the town's possession, and the town said, we can make this entire building, or half of it, affordable senior housing, and then you get storefronts on the bottom of it? I think that's what, that maybe, if, if I'm correct, H one dash one says, do we have current buildings that the town owns that we can start to look at making affordable senior housing, without going into raw land and then developing and doing new construction? Um, I think one, two is really important, but that's where you almost, um, have to get all of the boards and committees involved, like the Board of Selectmen, and the Z B A, and the Planning Board, those three primary boards, to understand the importance of inclusionary zoning. But there is, like Kathy said, there's a give and take.
Yeah.
So if the residents in your town are saying, oh, we don't want any more density, we can't, we don't like density, then it's hard to do inclusionary zoning.
So, so that's an interesting point, because I feel like I heard a lot of feedback from residents say that they wanted, they didn't want the density, but they wanted affordability. So how do we, like, balance that trade-off and provide, like, what this town wants to see? Well, you're gonna, you want open space, but you want affordability, and you don't want density, but you want, you know, how do you do it all? It's kind of.
Well, like Kathy said.
Not even million, it's like the zillion dollars.
Yeah, it is. Because land is already expensive, so you've got your land to begin with is expensive. And then just to build at the level that people build right now, especially if you're now building for seniors, which is even more, maybe a little more complex, right? You know, you've got some handicap issues or stuff that you have to do in your building code, then it becomes very expensive housing. So how do you take that, you know, and make it affordable down to even, I, I would love to get to Rick's level of two hundred thousand, but, I mean, you, you can't possibly do that unless you're making all little condos. Right? So now you're getting one building, one big building, but you have twelve condos in it. That's the density. So if a developer says, sure, I'll take a building, and I'll make them ten fair market value and two affordable, but maybe that building would only be approved for, let's say, eight or something, or six, right? It's like a give and take. So that's where the density comes in. So if your community in general doesn't have, does not like density, then it runs against affordability, because density allows for, to have more units together, so that you can make more affordable. Otherwise, the developer will just say, I'm just gonna go the next town who will allow me to, you know, prefers the density. And then therefore I can, you know, build what I need to build, make the money, and give a couple for affordable. Believe me, um, most developers don't wanna give, don't wanna give up them. They'd probably prefer their affordable units to be off-site, not what they're building. But, or give you money. You know, I'll give you money in exchange for, you go do it yourself. But it's important to just have the developer build it themselves, and keep it in the complex that they're in, and everyone coexists no matter how much they pay for it, right?
And was there anything, I, I don't remember, and maybe it's too detailed for the master plan, but to really hone in on what the seniors are saying, like some sort of focus group or exploratory, like, because I, I, like, to your point, if all of a sudden we were to reuse buildings downtown, and say turn Old Town Hall into affordable housing units, but the seniors don't wanna live on that Route twenty strip, because they wanna be able to park their car, or they wanna, if they have cars. So it would be nice to find out the whole package of how they really feel about it, and where they actually would go. Versus, in their minds, do they picture living in an apartment downtown, or, I don't know?
Right. So I think in general, most people are starting to conjugate towards the center of your town for the walkability. So most seniors, you know, might keep their car, but are giving it up so that they can get out of their apartment and walk down the street and go to a shop, or do something like that, or, you know, have someone pick them up or something. So, I mean, I actually think it maybe, it went back to like, you know, in the nineteen fifties and sixties, when you have like a north gate built, and you have, that, that might then might have been considered to be dense, and people then would say, oh my gosh, I can hear my neighbor having an argument next door, right? Whereas I'm gonna go live out in Green Street in the woods, and I can't see my neighbor. Well nowadays, it's like, you know, it's, they're looking for density like that. And so maybe as, as a board, you have to start to think of, how do you determine what is density? What density to me is not density to you.
Right, that's a great point.
Or Amy, or someone else. But once you determine the level of palatability of density, what, what your community can accept for density, then you can, then you can start to look at, how can you get inclusionary bylaw? And then you can give more guidance to developers, because then developers are confused, they're like, well, what do they want? What don't they want? Well, until they figure out what they want, I'm going to Shrewsbury and Westboro. You know, and stuff like that, so. And you can actually, you can see other towns doing it. But I would stress, you know, I know in Shrewsbury, they have an inclusionary bylaw, don't they?
They, yes, they do.
Yep. And I, I, I've even talked to some developers who prefer to give a check versus doing it themselves, and I'd like to see the bore more, the board more inclined to saying to them, no, we want you to do the work, and making the units part of the complex versus, you know, you don't have as much money as this person, so you need to live over here. You know, I'd much rather them to be part of more the complex, and not put the burden on the town, because then the town has to figure out how to build it. They got a check, and the town doesn't wanna be builders. They want the developers to do it. So it does get, and to Kathy's point, it does get complicated, and you do, it is to the benefit to have another committee do some brainstorming about it, because the more they can do, can come back to you and say, here's what we thought, you know?
Um, there was also something interesting at C M R P C, which I mentioned at one of the meetings, was like a senior overlay. It was like a, for housing for seniors, there was an overlay district, which just provided that sort of housing for seniors. I don't know, uh, it didn't sound like there'd be, you know, just a portion of a development, it sounded like it would be an overlay. I don't know much about it, but I just thought it was maybe as part of the, the group we're talking about it, maybe that was something to talk about.
Yeah, so we used to have a over fifty-five bylaw, and then it, it, you know, developers started coming to us, or we, you know, saying that, you know, there's, there wasn't a need back then. So we took it off the books, and we didn't do it, we didn't have it anymore. We do have a couple of overlays, we have an overlay that's out on, um, near the Big Allos. And there's a huge parcel of land over there, that's an overlay for housing on top of.
Open space residential.
Open space residential out there. I mean, there was a time when, I, gosh, I wanna think, this is way back to the Rick days, when we were, maybe as much as ten years ago, we talked about clustered housing. Which is where you make the, the little tiny cottages, you know, with the open space on the outside. You know, that's what they're talking about, a little bit about density. I think cluster housing would be great out in areas when you go out towards Green Street, in areas where you got larger parcels of land. You know?
And then they have to protect.
And actually, and that's the second overlay district that, that exists in the bylaw for the, for the residential A and residential B districts.
Yeah.
Um, where again, it's, you know, there's, there's, there's always the density trade-off. You know, if you want more open space, then, then there has to be more units of housing. I mean, it's just the economics of, you know, how the world works, it's not unique to Northborough. But, um, so we, so we do presently have those two overlay districts that are both related to trying to get, um, more usable open space in a development. So concentrating the houses in one area, um, or several areas, but with, you know, the usable open space.
Um, Anthony had a couple of comments. He had expressed concern about any sort of, if we were to have something like inclusionary housing bylaw, if there'd be any sort of manipulation or unintended consequences, where it turns out we don't actually get, it just turns out to be a loophole somehow. He didn't say loophole, I'm just trying to editorialize it a little bit. So is that something that was discussed, of, like, if there's a, if, does, is there any risk there for putting that in, that it doesn't actually become what we hoped it would be, or?
I guess we just have to be careful when we write bylaw, because actually when the.
If, if you write bylaw.
If you write bylaw, right.
These are only recommendations.
Okay.
And they're gonna go through, you know, all, each one of these recommendations is gonna go through many levels of, you know, again, if the, if the selectmen reenact the housing partnership, you know, they would be tackling, you know, the housing section, and then, you know, coming forward to the boards that are the permit authority boards, or permit granting authority boards, and, you know, and, and making their suggestions, and, you know. And then again, do, you know, do you wanna go forward with the bylaw or not? That's, you know, so there's, there's a lot more involved from, you know, from, from one sentence here to actually making it a reality.
That's true. So I think overall, just his comments were similar, also on the study to understand the price points, was just wondering who, who's the study by, and if there was potential for unintended consequences. Um, same for missing middle, he thought maybe it was intended for urban areas, where people could, where there's more space and the ability to build taller housing. Just possible unintended consequences, and if it was right for our town. And just the housing partnership, um, just trying to understand the goal there. So those are his comments for that. Okay, so we're about, any other comments on this?
I just think when they put, um, the goals together and order them, I think that was another thing that the Master Plan Committee was gonna do next, was the order of importance. When you get to H three dash one, and it talks about the town's capacity to service increased housing demands, like, I think that would be the first thing you did. Like, even though it's H three, I think you have to look at, what can our town handle municipal-wise before we start making changes? But that was just, I just think that should go first.
Oh, you think H three one should be, H three should actually be H one?
Yeah, because I feel like before you start making changes to the zoning to add more density, or things here and there, we, we need to do like an impact study, and how much increased housing can our municipal services hold? Like, I don't, I'm, we're on the planning board, and I don't know if I've ever seen, like, you know, are we getting there build-out, or how many houses can Northborough support, and just, I don't know. I don't wanna have to buy, build a new school, or. I'd just be curious, because we just, I know we haven't done a lot of big projects, there are little projects here and there. But when I was at the school, people were like, oh, Proctor's getting really crowded, you know, we lost a lot of rooms, it was getting more crowded. I just wanna see an impact study of how much, when we talk about higher density, how much higher density can we actually buffer into our town? Because the master plan twenty years ago, said when we got to this point, we'd be at build-out, and I don't think build-out is a bad thing.
Is there an impact study in there at all?
I don't think so. Well, this, I think this H three dash one, it talks about identifying the town's capacities to service increased housing demands. And expanded infrastructure, so I guess there's a cost of community service studies in L U one dash one, and we haven't done land use yet tonight, but maybe that's the L U one dash one, which is actually the very first thing here, so that would be good. Do the cost of community services study. But that just talked about economic value of open space and natural lands, which I think is super important. But I also think we need to study to see how much our town could absorb as far as density. And from what I read, uh, online, like, I don't know if it's called an impact study, or. I don't know if the selectmen ever do that, like.
Well, part of the, the master plan, what they're going to be providing is the, they're doing a modified, um, and I call it modified, because it is not a full build-out analysis, where you look at, you know, the. where you look at, you know, the, the topography and the wetlands and the, you know, where, and then you, you know, you discount certain characteristics, you know, slopes of, in excess of, you know, I'm just, you know, three percent or, you know, that's, I'm just saying that, but, so they're going to be doing sort of a, a modified buildout as part of the, you know, that'll be included in the master plan. And that's just taking, you know, you, you take a look at your zoning, you take a look at, you know, how many acres are remaining, I mean, we're, we're pretty close to buildout in this community. I mean, there's, you have large tracts of land, you know, such as like the, you know, the golf course, both golf courses in Yon Meadow, you know, Junior Hill, I mean, you know, you, you know, the impacts of something like that, if those were to ever be developed, you know, could completely, and we talked about it, including school, you know? But, so, so that's, so they're, they're doing an analysis that's part of the master plan, that just talks about the, you know, talks about the zoning, the remaining land, you know, using present zoning, because that's what you do, you use present zoning to figure out, you know, how many lots are still, yeah, yeah.
Because like Westboro's, developing Westboro State, but those are all over 55, right? I think-
Yep, yep.
So those won't have a big impact on their schools, because something like that could have a huge impact. I just want to make sure, so buildout analysis would be great to have.
Can I just ask a quick question? On, when we used to have the housing partnership, was a planning board member on it?
Um, I don't remember what the makeup was.
That would just be interesting.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I'm, you know, I, I don't remember what the makeup was. It wasn't like the open space committee where, where it was, you know, one person from conservation, one person from planning, one person from, who else, you know, I don't think it was that specific.
Yeah, I would just think when you look at the description of what they would do, it might be worthwhile just to have one board member on it, just because they'll start to talk about policies, and so it might be-
There would be models that, that state, I mean, there's a whole, you know, division in the state that, that works with communities and local housing partnerships, and then there's also the agency called the Massachusetts Housing Partnership.
Okay.
That's, you know, that everyone uses for the guidance.
Okay, all right.
Again, if the town wanted to do that.
Yep, okay.
You know, they're all just-
Ifs. Yep. Okay.
Would it be too aggressive to do land use?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that was all the feedback here. In her, one other question about, in looking at some of the survey results, are they posted on the master plan website, the survey results, comments from the survey?
They, you know, I haven't posted the survey results in a while, so they're going to, you summarize this part of the executive summary in the, in the master plan, but I, I don't, I can't honestly say right now how they appear on the website. Whether it's just the question, the percentage of who, or I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, so are there any public comments about the, whatever, master plan or other? Jason?
Jason Crowe, where's that, Mr. Plan Steering Committee Representative? I, I heard this mentioned again, and I, I just want to make the clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, the order of the goals, and they're in a particular category, or the order of the recommendations under a goal are not necessarily ordered in terms of priority, and I think I've heard that a couple of times mentioned, or the suggestion that there's a priority. There may be some implied sequence that might be necessary in a couple of cases during our meetings, I think we recognize that and might have reordered them in a couple of cases. It may not be consistent throughout the plan, but I want to be clear that the ordering does not imply any priority of something being more important than another, so.
Okay. That's good to know, but in the implementation plan, it will be short-term, medium, long, so there will be a priority assigned eventually, just not in this format.
It'll have some sense of order, yeah.
Okay, that's mine as well, so that's good to know. That's going to be quite a job to reorder this. Okay, any other comments?
Um, here, you know, for another reason, I was at the ZBA zoning board meeting, and we weren't allowed to discuss use, and it's regarding stairs. And since we couldn't discuss it, I was hoping I could talk up here and ask the board how by right use of stairs was determined, determined as far as the use. When we read seven dash oh five twenty classification of the uses, step one is that it doesn't appear that our bylaws allow the use of electromagnetic radiation in light and I'm just wondering why this is allowed.
So I think we can speak to the general process, not specific to the applicant, but I think we can speak to the actual process itself. So to clarify, Kathy, Bob decides, he looks at application and decides the use?
Yes, yep, the building inspector is also the zoning enforcement officer. And, and what he does, well, actually, do you want more details?
Sure, yes, sure.
What, what he does with, with every applicant that comes in is they fill out a zoning determination form, and so they explain what it is that they're proposing to do, and then the zoning enforcement officer goes through the zoning bylaw, makes the determination about whether it's allowed, or it needs a special permit, or it's not allowed, and if they wanted to pursue it, you know, the applicant would have to, you know, do a variance, apply for a variance. And so that then is turned back to the applicants, and then from there, you know, they go through the permitting process. So there is a zoning determination form, it was part of the stairs, you know, application. And so, can I send you a copy of that, Gina?
That would be wonderful.
This was, you know, he filled out.
So if, okay.
I'm sorry, if, you know, when I look up electromagnetic radiation, there's a 26-page definition determining what it is, so I wonder, you know, how our zoning officer is qualified in just a need solely within the applicant, as to how this is an acceptable use. And I don't even know, if you can define electromagnetic radiation as a town planner, can you define it?
No, not sitting here right now, but, I mean-
The zoning officer can't define it as well, so I, I think there's an issue here with the use.
So in terms of, if a, if the zoning enforcement, if Bob, I'll just say Bob, applies a use that people have questions about, what's the right forum, like under what hearing or, because I do, I do believe, I went to that ZBA meeting and the ZBA was not allowed to talk about the use. So where would people get to weigh in about use if they thought it was, if they had an issue or didn't think it was correct? So not specific to this applicant, but just in general, if I didn't agree with the use, what would I do?
If, if you as a resident or an applicant or a-
A constituent, how would somebody, somebody who missed?
I mean, the-
Somebody who reports it?
The, the process is, is that if an applicant disagrees with their zoning determination, then there's a, there's a process outlined in the state law, in Massachusetts general law, that first it goes to the zoning board of appeals, and then depending on what the zoning board of appeals determines, then the, you know, person may then go to court. But if a, if a-
That's after the fact, what is, I'm sorry.
That's okay, so just direct it to me, that's all right, and then we can, no, no, it's all right, it's, it's definitely a good question, I'm just trying to think of how we just formulated it.
We had, we had an issue where our town, our zoning officer determined that 429 Wiggie Street was agricultural, and our town planner decided it was a blocking opportunity for our town. 10 years later, gazillion dollars later, it is a hoax and it, it's been a joke of the town. So here we are relying again on our zoning officer and our town planner, and there's no other, there's no other checks and balances, we're relying on these two. I don't know why, I don't know where there's checks and balances, we're suffering because of these people.
Can I just ask a question? So there's an applicant, I didn't go to the ZBA hearing, but there's an applicant who filled out a form, the zoning interpretation form, and Bob says the use is allowed, and then this is the other zoning, his other zone, he has, where they have to get a variance or something, they go to the ZBA for it. ZBA says, we can discuss, did they ask for a variance, or what were they asking for, relief, or what?
They asked, in this particular case, the applicant applied for a setback variance.
Okay, so the, so the only reason before the ZBA is a setback variance. So they go, the ZBA says, we'll give you the setback variance, but then neighbors come in, when anybody from the residents come in and say, I'm confused, this doesn't seem like the, the right use, I'm confused about your interpretation. And that board says, I'm sorry, we can't talk about it. So, so what do you do, so then, how do the residents address that with the use, if they have a question about it, I think is what this resident is asking? Do they then go to the board of selectmen and say, the board of selectmen, we are concerned about this use determination, or do they come to the planning board? Is that what, that's basically what they're asking?
What's the process for that?
Yeah, I mean, the planning board doesn't have any authority over zoning interpretation that's, that's given by state law to the building inspector. Some communities have a separate zoning enforcement officer, like your bigger cities will have a separate, you know, person that only does zoning enforcement, and interpretation is all part of that. So, so there, there really, there is no formal process. I mean, that's, that's, that person's job, that's, that's his responsibility is to, you know, part of his responsibilities to interpret the zoning.
So if, if I could just, so, so, so if the zoning says, yep, I think that can be a dog park, and I'm like, how could that be a dog park, right? And he says, nope, that's a dog park, I'm like, what do I do? And if we say, there's nothing, the ZBA can't do anything, it's the officer, the zoning enforcement officer can do it, do they then have to bypass the town and go to the state level? I mean, how do you question when an office, how do you-
I mean, I, I'm, I, I suppose as a, you know, as a resident, call the zoning enforcement officer and, and ask him about his interpretation.
Yeah.
But there is no formal-
Process?
Right, there is no appeal process, there is, you know, I mean, that, that's-
This is passed backwards.
So what about the ZBA? Could they appeal it? Like, could the planning board appeal a use, or could the ZBA question a use? Like, I would think the ZBA has to uphold the use, and if you're allowing a variance, it has to be a variance on a use that's allowed on that site, but if the ZBA themselves say, well, I kind of questioned that use on that site, are they, they should be allowed to question the zoning?
No, they don't.
No one question?
Well, the truth is you can't question, it's like, there's, you know, there's, there's lanes that you're all in, you know, by, by Massachusetts general law, what sort of sketch authority, statutory authority is. And so the zoning board appeals in their, in the Massachusetts general law, if an applicant is, questions what a zoning enforcement officer has determined, whether or not that use is allowed on that property, and if they disagree with the zoning enforcement officer, then the state law sets out a process that they go to the zoning board of appeals, hence the main board of appeals. So they appeal to the zoning board of appeals, saying that they do not agree-
But the use cannot be discussed.
That they do not agree with the determination, and then the, then the zoning board of appeals holds a public hearing and then makes a determination on that person's appeal. And then if that person is not satisfied with what the zoning board of appeals has determined, whether, you know, they, they will vote to either support the zoning enforcement officer, or they will vote, you know, against the zoning enforcement officer. So whichever way it goes for the applicant, the applicant then has the ability to, you know, appeal to the court process, just like with, you know, a decision of the planning board or a decision of the zoning board of appeals, you know, there's a, there's a 28-year appeal process and so forth.
So my recommendation would be, as a resident, is if he has the authority to make the decision, the planning board can't weigh in it, which is what you're saying, we have no authority to weigh in, the ZBA had no authority to weigh in, the people who oversee the zoning enforcement officer are really the board of selectmen, so I would suggest going to a board of selectmen's meeting, because it's, we can't weigh in on it, ZBA can't weigh in on it.
So he solely reports to the board of selectmen?
I'm assuming there's a-
Sold to, you know, sold to-
To the town administrator.
To the town administrator, so obviously, they were made aware of their application, and he, you know, he's not going home on his own and making this decision on his own. So the, the town has decided that this was okay, having this radiation going on in our town, and in addition to our town administrator and our town planner. This was a good idea for Westboro to have this radiation, this enormous company come into our town. Is that, is that my understanding?
So did the decision come out, the decision isn't done yet?
The variance decision on the setback? The, the board voted, they approved the variance setback, and we're drafting.
Okay, so once the decision's out, that could be, residents could appeal that decision.
The variance setback.
So then, then maybe what, is when the decision's available, if you look at the decision, and then from that point, the residents could then-
My next question is, how to change this process, because this is passed backwards. It makes no sense that we have one man, one man or one woman deciding what use is, is acceptable. You can't just go into a company and meet that, with them solely, them give you a, you know, definition, and you come back and say that this is an acceptable use. They report to us as a town, I mean, how, how they, it should be put forward and say, you know, what do you think, is this an acceptable use? Especially when it doesn't even meet any of the criteria of an acceptable use. If you read through the guidelines, it does not meet any of the acceptable uses.
So as a board, we can't even discuss it because, so for example, the applicant who was here first tonight, right, I know you weren't here, but he was here, he wants to open up a dog walking business in a residential area. It's not coming before the planning board, it's going before the ZBA. So we have all of this stuff to review, to send a letter on to the ZBA. It's the first time I've heard of it, like, I don't even know what that company's doing because we don't have any of the information.
But the site plan will be coming to us.
Eventually, yeah. So will the site plan be coming to us?
For stairs, yes.
Okay, so eventually it'll come to us.
If the, if the, if the addition kicks off the threshold, because otherwise, if they're, you know, for a company just to move into, you know, a building, you know, I mean, that happens every day, so that, those don't get, you know, go through site plan, it's just if they kick off one of the thresholds. And I don't, I honestly don't remember what the size of their addition is, if they're proposing, so whether or not I-
Three times the size of the building, I mean, it's ridiculous. I, I'm disgusted that it, it doesn't meet any of the bylaws, and who determine the x-rays to be used within the, the 25 feet walls, right? 25 feet? I mean, what's going on here?
Well, we can't discuss anything specific to an application that's not before us, but in general, your questions are good about the process, so what, maybe we can talk about as a board further, it's really about the, no, that's okay, I understand it's probably really frustrating and making you upset at your home.
The process is ridiculous, and I, I think it needs to be changed, and I guess I get to figure out how to do that.
It's not just on you, I think maybe that's something that we can all, you know, talk about and figure out what's working, what's not working, just not specific to, yeah, so
that is frustrating for sure, especially if that's where you live and your family lives, and that must be really difficult, so I think that, oh, Amy, sorry.
I have a question, because I did go to the, the building, the building department's website, and I looked up appeals, and it says, number three, under appeals, any person, including an officer of a board of the town, or in a budding city or town, agreed by an order or decision of the building inspector or other administrative official in violation of any provision of MGL 40A of the- in violation of any provision of MGL40A of the Northborough Town Zoning Bylaw." It sounds like there is an appeal process. It's written, it says, "The board will hear any appeals," and it says, "any person, including an officer of the board, any board." So, I would think that like, say, a planning board member had a question about a use, that we could appeal the use and send it to the ZBA. It sounds like it goes to the ZBA to look at the use. Because I agree that if you have a question with the use, there should be some way to question it or appeal it. Because even with the steris, and I emailed Bob a couple times for the use that he was using, but I didn't get a reply. Because on the, on the zoning determination, he wrote that it was medical sterilization, which I couldn't find in our zoning. And then, when I asked that night at the meeting, he said the use was processing. And if you look under industrial uses for processing, it says, "Free from neighborhood disturbances such as electromagnetic radiation." So.
And that's what exactly was that?
I was kind of, I was concerned about the use myself. And I really feel that a board or a person, there is a route to appeal. I started researching into it, and it's, it's on about thirty days, you have to appeal a decision by the building inspector. So I was, I actually wanted to find out the process too, I was, you know.
Is this something maybe town council could give us advice on?
I think, you know, the fact that, that you're talking about a person that's not here, and what he's responsible for, and what he's not responsible for, I think that person should be here.
Well, just process in general.
Have any more conversation about.
Okay.
All right, so maybe we'll cut it?
That's my opinion, but.
We can cut it here, but just in terms of like, what is that process? Because I think it's a good point, like, there can't just be no checks and balances, and just one person gets to decide, and there's no way for anybody to ever do anything about it. There has to be some sort of avenue. If there's not, then, then maybe that's the answer. But if, could, could council maybe advise on what is, or whoever knows, what does that look like for people, so that we can articulate it?
Well, I would suggest that, that we check with the, with the zoning enforcement officer first.
So, so I also emailed.
And have him provide some information about, you know, what his job responsibilities are, and, and what his.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Appeal process.
Okay, so that would be great, if we could get, go ahead.
Oh, I'd just like to write a letter to town council too, because I'd like to find out what the appeal process is. Because if we go now and wait, you're gonna miss the window.
So, when was the ZBA?
Maybe I could explain a little bit. The, I believe the reason, I wasn't at the ZBA, but I believe the reason they didn't talk about uses, because that was not, it was before them. All they were talking about was the setback variant.
But so, why, so, so, but where is that place, they talk about it?
You can't talk about it here. What happens is that applicant goes back now, he, he gets a variance, and he files another plan. He goes back before the, whether it's the Planning Board, I believe it's the ZBA, for his site plan.
No, it'll be planning.
And that, that process can be appealed based upon incorrect determination of the use. So, they, they, they don't get anything until they get approval to build the building. All they got so far was the approval to submit a plan that shows a building closer to the property line than zoning allows. But they got permission to do that, but now they still have to come forward with a plan, and when that plan is approved, if it's not approved, then it's done. If it is approved, then that, every decision that any of the boards makes is appealable to the court.
So, thank you for explaining that, but I, I wonder if the site plan is not to approve a use, the site plan is to look at a pro.
You can appeal the site plan based upon the use.
No, there's no, there's no appeal process for a site plan. Because it's a site approval process.
So, there's no, it's automatically approved?
There's no.
Based on the town plan?
So why don't we, so can we?
The building inspector, as Kathy explained, it's the process. And the appeal process is for his decision on his own interpretation.
Yeah, we are on the seventeenth.
Okay.
So, if we could maybe start with that, and then maybe just hear more about the process.
Then.
Yeah.
Whether it's all in agricultural, it could all be a lot easier.
Your next meeting is nine seventeen.
Okay.
So, I do have a question on that, because if the, if there is to be an appeal of how the process was handled, it has to be done within thirty days of a decision being made by the zoning?
Well, the appeal, you have twenty days, but I read that appealing, like, building inspectors, thirty days.
Well, no, the twenty days is, there's an appeal process that's set out in the state law. It's the same for every community, it's not unique to Northborough.
Yeah.
So, when a board, when a permit granting authority board renders a decision, so some, in some cases, the Planning Board is the permit granting authority, and in some cases, the zoning board is. So when the decision is then officially date stamped.
Okay.
With the town clerk's office, that's when the twenty day appeal period starts.
Has it been dates due?
No, we're writing, we're in the process of writing the decision. So, when the, so when it's date stamped, then the twenty day appeal period starts. And that's a completely, has nothing to do with the, with the town.
The zoning officer, or when he, when they made.
Right, right, that has nothing to do with the zoning officer. So that's, that's an appeal of a board's decision.
Okay.
Now, my understanding of an appeal of a zoning determination is, is different than Amy's, and so, we're gonna clarify that with, with the, you know, building inspector.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be good.
I don't know, I still think we need a vote by, I mean, we need to talk to town council, because.
Are we gonna run out of days?
Yeah, I think either we'll run out of days, but then if we, if, say, there's a question, ten, I don't know how many days we are from the seventeenth, we have twelve days from now. We don't, we have a question with Bob's determination, now we're gonna have to go to town council, it's, we're gonna run out of time. I'd just like to ask town council the question, what's the process to appeal a building inspector's interpretation for a resident and for another board member? Say it's a ZBA, say it's the Planning Board. Because when I read it, like, you can't approve a site plan or a variance if the use, underlying use is not an allowed use. So, I don't know, I'd like to, I'd like to vote to ask town council a question.
Okay, do other board members feel that way? Would you like more, would you like?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Michelle, did you have something to say?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, so do, then, can we make a motion to, for town council to give us guidance on the appeal process, either way, regardless of Bob's?
Yeah, but, I mean, I, you know, again, any request to, you know, I've said this, you know, a million times, just so that you know, you know, for any department or board, you know, the, the process is, the, you know, would request the use of town council through the town administrator, and then I can go forward with it.
Does that take a long time? I just, I see the clocks ticking, and, you know, I just, I was just hoping we could get an answer.
Okay, well, do we need a motion for that anyway?
Yeah, a motion and, and what, what you're asking of, of town council.
Okay, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we ask town council the procedure for appealing a building inspector's interpretation by either a resident, by another town board. I don't, can anybody else think of anything that we need to add to it?
So it would be an appeal by a resident or a town board member for an interpretation, as you said, Kathy, for a use. Because he's approved the use, and the use would not have gone before the ZBA or the Planning Board.
So wait, first, I just need a second.
The criteria, the criteria.
So, procedure for appealing a building inspector's zoning interpretation.
Okay, is there a second?
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Is that it's time sensitive?
All in favor? Okay.
Well, the time sensitive part is, the administrator has to approve it. If he doesn't approve it, then it doesn't get.
So basically, the town administrator.
That's what Kathy said.
Is this a joke, really?
Well, hopefully he won't.
Is this how, is that happen in, in the 149th year, the money flood totally being educators?
No, I understand your frustration. So we're gonna, we put in a motion for that, and then we're gonna move on from this part, and then we have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
And we'll be discussing it on the seventeenth.
Or if we had it before, then, can we get it emailed out, and just not discuss it?
Well, we'll have to discuss it at some point, so, by the seventeenth, we'll look to do that. Okay.
Okay. So, you asked for public input with regards to the housing, and we're done with that, right?
Housing we're done with.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other feedback?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, we are, do we have any lot releases?
Yeah.
A and Rs?
Yeah.
Subcommittee updates. So, CMRPC, I have one. There is, there are two meetings coming up for that. There's one, actually Kathy, I don't know if you saw this. The Twenty First Century Municipalities Challenges and Opportunities on October eighth, did you see this?
Uh, no, I didn't see that one.
So if you, I'll give this to you if you want, it looks like it's something more relevant to maybe you'd be interested in. I don't know if it's for staff, it looks like it may be good for, well, I guess it could be municipal officials and staff, hosted by Karen Polito and all of the Mass Regional Planning Agencies, it's a statewide conference.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, you have this already, okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I just didn't, I didn't recognize.
And then, I have to look at my phone, just to look at the state, or the, the actual content. It is the, on September twelfth, it's the CMRPC meeting. It'll actually be held in our very own Northborough Library, which is exciting. And it is about, Kathy, will you be there that night?
Yes, I'll be there.
Okay, so it's about, it's Prepare to Plan, Plan to Prepare. And it's about vulnerability preparedness planning, FEMA hazard mitigation assistance grants, and then US Economic Development Agency disaster recovery grants. So that is at our library, September twelfth at seven o'clock. And that is it for CMRPC. Um, let's see. Open space, any updates?
Well, that's Anthony.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
And I know they are looking into different things. I think they're, I don't know though, because I'm not on open space anymore. But I did walk, um, is it Howard Street? With Anthony, because I was phasing out, he was phasing in, and so I went for a walk of the Howard Street, but that's the open space. I don't know if they're moving forward with that, I think they're gonna do an appraisal.
No, appraisal.
It's already done.
Yeah, do you want me to give an update?
Sure.
Sure.
So, the, last week, the, there was a joint meeting of the Conservation Commission, the Open Space Committee, and the Trails Committee. And so they voted to move forward with making an offer on purchasing the back portion, it's approximately nineteen acres, of a property known as six fifteen Howard Street, there's one house on it. And so, the town is in the process of doing the negotiations on what to offer for that property. It's land that abuts Mount Piscata, and so the land would be, you know, considered open space, and managed by the Conservation Commission, just like Mount Piscata is.
How about the, is it Oger, they called it? There was a lot, and it was for sale, and the last meeting we were at, we weren't sure if it passed papers.
Yep, that was also discussed at the joint meeting with those three boards, and the update on that is, actually, the, there's four, five lots that were available on, off of Oger App, and also off of Lincoln Street. And the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission voted to go forward with an appraisal only if all of the parcels were available. At the time, the Oger App parcel was under consideration for someone, for a private party to purchase, and that private party has since signed a purchase and sale. And so, the committee, part of their vote was that if it wasn't all of the property, they, they wouldn't, they weren't on the pursuit of an appraisal in purchasing the property. So since that time, the Recreation Commission has, has looked at just the Lincoln Street parcels, and, and they made a determination that the parcel is not large enough, and there's too many wetlands on it to be of any use to the Recreation Commission for, you know, space. So, so that, those are off the, off our table.
And I saw the dog park got funded by your resident. The DCR, there's a, there's a grant, a matching grant to do a dog park down in Yellik, and that was funded by your resident.
We received this, the, the go-ahead from the state to, to move forward with that. So, the, it's a matching program where the state is, is, is asking the town for a portion of the development costs of developing a dog park. So, the state granted permission to use their property for a dog park. And so, there's an active campaign right now to raise the money. And, and we were able to raise the, the amount that we had to initially provide to the state, which was sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. So that's been provided to the state, and then that gives us the, it's sort of like the gateway to, then the state will appoint a project manager and, and move forward with designing the dog park. You know, there'll be public meetings and so forth, but, and so we're anticipating that that's going to happen. The design and so forth will be, you know, through the fall and the winter, and then hopefully with construction in the spring. But we haven't been assigned our project manager yet, so that's, that's us as staff, hoping that that's what the.
And where would the park be?
Off of Hudson Street. The, the state owns quite a bit of land along the Astabet River. And there's a, a whole trail network that the Trails Committee has developed. It's called the Yellik Conservation Area. And so there's a large field there that's, I mean, it's.
I see, yeah.
It's always been in the field.
Yeah.
So, years ago, we approached the state to use that as, as a dog park. And at the time, the state was not so much in favor of using state property for dog parks. They have since, you know, with change in administration, change in secretaries, their policies have changed, and they have allowed dog parks on state land. And, and so we applied for this, this partnership program, is what it's called. And we were, you know, awarded to, to move forward with the process.
Yep.
Great, great.
It's good news.
Anything from Community Preservation Committee, Millie?
No meetings yet.
Nothing yet?
Slow.
The, the applications, this isn't, this is from staff, so, so Millie's not involved in this part as a committee member. But the, the applications are out, and they're due November first. And then, once we receive the applications, we'll start with the public hearing process, which will be, you know, December or January.
Design review?
We haven't met, and hope to meet in the next month.
And groundwater?
Fred would know, but I'm assuming we're meeting this month?
Depending on the applicant's ability to get any information that is necessary, the meeting will typically be next week. Like, the application was incomplete, I emailed them and asked them for some additional stuff and course of a special permit that he needs to get. And if it comes in, by the end of next week, we'll try to hit the following.
Okay.
Tentatively, I, I reserve the room for, I think it's Wednesday, September eighteenth.
September eighteenth, I just wanna write it.
Is this Rice Ave you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so if they.
The only application, it would be the only application on the groundwater, I think.
So if they don't come in for yours, then they're just gonna continue the ZBA?
Well, what we would do, with what I would do on behalf of the Groundwater Committee, is send a letter to the ZBA indicating that the board did not have adequate information to make the recommendation. Again, the Groundwater Committee's advisory and the ZBA can do whatever they do to make a decision, but they're supposed to get information from the Groundwater Committee.
Okay.
When is that meeting?
It would, it's tentative, or Wednesday, September eighteen.
Okay. Anything for, in, for a twenty twenty annual town meeting?
It's been scheduled for, you know, Central Mass, who's coming, a, a staff person from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is coming to your next meeting.
That's right.
And that's what we'll be talking about, solar and hazardous waste.
That's great, that'll be great.
I had a couple things I might wanna add, but I'm not ready till the next meeting.
Okay. So we have this draft board appointment policy, and we are going to get through this tonight. We keep pushing it off. So, the last we looked, Kathy provided a couple different edits. Did anybody have any additional comments, or does this look, oh, the one thing we had questioned was the rotation. And is that, this is what this letter is that you left for us, Kathy, about the, okay?
So, so after your last, so it's a email from town council?
Yes.
And so, after, you know, the discussion at your last meeting was to determine, you know, how, how the, since we've since received approval from the EG's office, so how the three-year term limit would be. so how the three-year term limit, um, would begin.
Mm-hmm.
And so what, um, Town Council, um, in, I, I can just summarize very briefly, but in the second paragraph, um, you know, because obviously any new person coming on is, you know, subject to the three-year, um, and we have one opening on the board. And then, um, as far as the existing members, what he's suggesting, um, and so I, you know, I just received this today. So, um, I can certainly talk to the Town Clerk's office and, um, and get these numbers. But is to take a look at the existing members, and, um, the, uh, the suggestion being is that, if I read this correctly, the, um, it. Is they, so, so you look, so you look at, I, I think he's suggesting that maybe the person who's been on the board the longest, that you would start with them, and, um, and, and be, because again, you wanna have staggered, you know.
Right.
Memberships. Um, so you would, you know, take that person first, and, you know, um, do a, you know, a three-year term, so that, so they've got a term now, and then, you know, you would do it to the next person, the next person. So that's, that's how you would apply the three-year.
Would it be, um, appropriate to ask Andy if he, based on when people have started their term, for him to outline what the schedule, or who would be the one to, do we look at this and outline it, or who?
Yeah, well, you're the appointing authority. So, yeah, so what I, so what I will get is when people were appointed.
Okay.
And, and, you know, provide you that information. And then you can go from there as far as starting to stagger, um, you know, terms. Because the question was, well, I think the main question was at the last meeting was, you know, how does it apply to, does it apply, and if so, how?
Yes.
To existing members. So that's what he outlines in his second paragraph here. So there's not, um, you know, there's not a kind of North Road policy that we're following. This is what, you know, his suggestion is as far as looking at people's length of service, and then starting to apply the three-year term.
Yes. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
And then it has these states in here. It doesn't, you could serve multiple terms. It's not a limit. It's just like giving both sides the ability to evaluate.
Yeah, and getting everyone on a.
Some sort of schedule.
So everyone will have an, an end date, that, that you can then look at whether you reappoint or appoint someone.
Okay. So for the actual policy of appointment, are, are there any additional comments on, does everyone have the most up-to-date version?
Of the Planning Board appointments, is that the one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just.
So there's, there's, um, I, I, I mean, I have just given everyone the, the two, there was just the, the basic one where, you know, I just went through and crossed off what, from selectmen to, you know, um, uh, either, you know, Town Planner or Planning Board, you know, depending on who would be, you know, collecting applications and so forth. And then, you know, as we talked about, Kerry had, um, made comments.
Does this look okay to everybody?
Um, I did have some questions when I looked it over.
Sure.
Um, on the first page, under interview subcommittee, it says that interviews shall be conducted by an interview subcommittee, which is composed of two members of the planning board. So there's no Board of Selectmen Committee interview.
So, uh, can I just see the version you're looking at? Do you have any crossouts on it yet?
I have a lot, my own.
Oh, your own crossouts. Oh, I'm sorry. No, so, so there's another version where that's, the interview subcommittee is actually crossed out, and it's just the planning board doing the interviews.
Oh, then I don't have that one. Okay, wait a minute. Is this the most current one?
Yeah, the one that, that's it. Yep.
Oh, okay.
So there isn't an interview similar, the Board of Selectmen do an interview subcommittee process, but we would just do it with the board, and not do an interview subcommittee.
So the, 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 the version that has the, the blue.
Yeah.
On it, I guess that's probably the easiest way.
It's the most current one.
Oh, okay.
Right, is, is the one with Kerry's comments.
Okay.
So that's the one that says the interview shall be conducted by members of the planning board, period.
Okay, I will relook at that then. Okay, and then, let me just see if there was anything else that I can see. Yep, uh, we can see. Two weeks.
So one thing too, and just talking about this, um, the terms. So now, we're not necessarily, just thinking about, um, design review. There may not be a February first, April thirtieth, set to expire schedule. Or no, it still would. It would still be set to expire in April. It would just be different years, not necessarily different timeline. Is that how it works on design review? Okay, so that would still work. Although, i- if we, if we have a vacancy, then that's a different story. So right now, we just have a, if we have a vacancy, we can just interview. It's not about the terms expiring. Appointment to fill a vacancy. There we go. I've answered my own question.
On the, on page three?
Yes. Okay. Any, are we good with this? Millie, any additional questions now that you've looked at it?
Nope, now that I see what you crossed out, it pretty much. Yeah. Answered everything I did.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to amend the, or create, is this an accor, this is a creation? This has not, never existed, or is this an amendment?
No, because it never existed.
It's a, it's a new.
What, um, what I need to find out, Kerry and to the board, is if, and I think that this can just be added to your rules and regulations, because you have a separate set of rules and regulations all about how to run a meeting, and, you know, that, that type of thing. So, um, what I will need to find out is to, as to whether or not, I, I don't believe that you have to hold a public hearing, because we didn't hold a public hearing to do the, you have to do it for the subdivision rules and regulations, but just the rules and regulations of the board, that's just something that you determined. And, um, so I'll, I'll check with, um, um, with the town administrator as to whether or not it's something that needs to be advertised, or can it just be added into the, um, the, your rules and regulations? And then I would just, you know, use the, I would use section numbers accordingly.
Okay, do we need a motion for, for this, or do we need that information first?
I think, I think we should.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the Planning Board Appointments Policy?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Planning Board Appointment Policy.
And your version, Kerry, it is, I mean.
As a.
As the most current version, also to include the feedback from Lido Council. Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second?
Great. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Amy, did you vote?
I voted, yeah.
Okay, all right. Great. Okay, so that, we can put to rest. That's great. So for design review, um, we should advertise that. Well, Kathy mentioned it was advertised, and then we didn't see it up there, so.
I think it's up there now.
Oh, good.
Right?
Okay, great.
Yeah, it, I mean, it, it has been.
Yeah.
It, but what, the page that you're referring to is, is a brand-new page that I've never seen before.
Okay.
That's being corrected, but it's, but it's on the, you know, page where people go to check for vacancies.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's always been on there. It's noted that it's a new board appointment.
Okay.
Um, any town pla, additional plan towner updates? Town Planner, sorry.
Yep, I do, but let me just catch up for one second. Okay, so on, um, just a couple things I wanted to, um, we already talked about the master plan. Um, there, um, because it's a current appeal, um, we, you cannot have any discussion about this, but I just wanted to give you an update that I can do in, in, um, public. Uh, so this is on the two twenty-two, um, West Main Street. And, um, when I checked with Town Council, um, the, his response is that, as of right now, there's been no further formal, formal litigation activity. Okay, so that's, that's where we're at. It's, it's, you know, it's in the report, the, the, I don't know. Um, but he helped to see. Um, and then I just wanted to, um, just to give you a peek at your upcoming agendas. Um, in September, um, we'd already talked about it a little bit, but, um, we've got, uh, planners from, I, I believe there's gonna be two staff people, um, from the Regional Planning Commission, and that's where we're specifically going to talk about, um, solar energy and hazardous waste. And then at your, um, then you have, uh, on October first, I think it's October first. Um, yeah, October first and October fifteenth, your two meetings in, uh, for October. Um, October first, there are no public hearings. Um, I don't have anything yet on the agenda. But on the fifteenth, um, you have, uh, two hearings as of right now. But, uh, actually, they're, I'm anticipating two applicants filing, because we've, we've been meeting with them as staff. So, um, there'll be, um, I believe someone from forty-one Lyman Street. Um, that's an industrial building, an existing industrial building that's proposing an addition. And then on Hudson Street, I don't have the address. An address hasn't been signed yet, but, um, that's a, a couple meetings ago, when, um, Ron Asbro came in to ask the board for some preliminary thoughts. Um, so I believe that, um, he will be filing for his land clearing, um, uh, site plan, um, for, for that. So most likely those two are going to be, um, on your October fifteenth agenda.
That was a person who asked, did you want a cul-de-sac, or different, yeah?
Right, yeah. He told, yeah, he had like two or three scenarios.
Yeah.
About, about what he, you know.
Was thinking about doing, okay.
Hudson Street.
Yeah.
But like I said, I don't have an address, but it's on the part of Hudson Street. It's in between, um, uh, Sol and Fawn, right where the corner is. It's in between Sol and Fawn, the boundary.
So if he's land clearing, will he have to come in front of us for an A and R? Like, has an A and R been done yet?
No, he hasn't done an A and R yet.
Would that have to be done before the land's cleared?
Um, yeah, most likely, or he may be filing at the same time, or.
Okay. Any other updates? No?
No, no, that's it for me.
Okay.
So I'm hoping like, I don't know if we're setting agendas or anything, but since we have two things on October fifteenth, maybe October first, we can do some talking about other, um, town meeting.
ZBA?
I mean, not zoning bylaws, instead of, you know, I know September will probably be focusing on solar and hazardous waste, but I might have a couple other things that I wanna approach, and I was hoping maybe I could run it by the board, and maybe October first would be a good date to do that.
Yes, what about, um, anything with the joint meeting with ZBA?
Yeah, that's, that's actually, that's my last thing, Kerry. I wanted to find out, um, because we had talked about, uh, um, or you had talked about, um, having a joint meeting, and I turned that up, that's too cold.
I know, it is.
Um, we've talked, um, you talked, and then we talked to the, uh, the zoning board of appeals, um, at their last meeting about holding, um, a joint meeting so that we could talk about zoning for, for town meetings. So, um, you know, I wanted to talk to you about when, you know, I think it's, we should do that sooner than later. So whether or not, um, you know, you want it as a separate meeting night, you know, that, that we can pick tonight, or, um, do you, you know, do we wanna see if, if members of, of the ZBA would be available for October first, or, um, uh, you know, uh, or, you know, I just wanted to come up with, with a date. I don't, I don't have any dates to, to offer you. I just wanted to see if, if you did wanna do it at a planning board meeting, or if you'd wanna do it just on a separate night. Um, again, ZBA means once a month.
The last week of every month?
Yeah, they need the fourth Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, you know, do you, do you wanna pick the, the second Tuesday in October? And this was my thought process on that one, where they've got a meeting, um, the, the last week of September. Um, so it's. Uh, no, there's just four Tuesdays in September.
There's five in October.
In October.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, you know, where the ZBA would be meeting on the twenty-fourth, that instead of maybe the first, y- you would maybe meet on the eighth, just to give them like, you know, separation. Um. Uh, groundwater at seven o'clock?
Oh, I see, I see.
On the eighth, you have groundwater?
We typically meet on the second Tuesday, um, because all the Tuesdays are filled up. So we have been planning to meet on the second Tuesday. This month, we're gonna push it off to the evidence that they're not ready, and we're hoping to still get an end before the end of October, in case this ZBA.
Right, what, the, the ninth? I mean, I don't think we have to go through a meeting late in October, but you know, I.
Instead of the first?
That, that's, yeah. I mean, that, again, that, for starters, that's my suggestion.
So instead of the first, or along with the first?
No, instead of the first, because what.
The ninth is Yankapoor. Is that a night that members might not be able to attend?
You know, from what I understand, I mean, the purpose of you meeting with the zoning board of appeals is you wanna talk about potential zoning for, for town meetings.
So do you don't think they could meet on the first, as a?
I, I don't know, uh, Kerry, I was just kinda looking at, you know, there would be just back-to-back meetings for them, but that's, that's why I was just looking at giving it a little bit of distance, but, I mean, I can certainly bask them if the, you know, I'll just send out an email tomorrow to see if they're available on the first.
What is that, how does that work for the board?
Yeah, 'cause I don't think I can do the ninth.
Maybe we try for the first?
Mm-hmm.
And then at the seventeenth, we meet again, and we can always reconfigure if we need to, if they have different dates, or? Any other thoughts on dates? Okay. Um, all right, so then getting back to the ZBA, but then also let's plan if you have other stuff for the first. We could obviously, like, then if we need to continue to meet, I guess we could continue on. Okay. Um, for.
The letter?
The letter, yes, okay.
So. I, I have, Kathy, do you wanna sort of take the highlights from the board about what, some concerns? Maybe Amy has some concerns. How, how do we draft the letter? Do you wanna take like?
Wherever you want me to bring the letter.
Okay.
Um, you know, I mean, it.
So I'll, I'll start first. Um, my concern was, I understand how we wanted to open it to the public, where he already, he said, "I will have five to eight employees," but I might open it to the public. That I, I found was a little, although I understand his generosity, um, could be a little confusing and could grow bigger and larger than more than anticipated. As Anthony would say, would, would you get unattended consequences from that? So I'd be concerned about what does that mean, and how do you regulate it? Um, because if you're already getting five vans at five dogs, you've got twenty-five dogs there, and then you open it to the public, I think Amy asked a question, that seems like a lot, um, for an area that's not designed to have it. So, in other words, it's a residential area. That was my first thing. My second was, when Kerry started talking about, and I think the reason you were asking the applicant their questions about, is there a vegetative buffer, meaning is there a buffer between the parking lot and the neighboring, so that the cars coming and going, would it? Um, i- if there's a natural vegetative buffer that is there now, um, you often see throughout the years, I've seen, that there's like a no-cut of vegetative growth. So if, if the applicant is saying, "We'll have so many cars coming and going, but there's a natural vegetative buffer that, that those headlights would never go into someone's home." I, I think the decision would want to include something about that that vegetative buffer would never be cut. I mean, you can prune it, but you can't, it's there to create like a buffer between the cars and the residence property. And then my, my other last two things are, um, I think noise is a very subjective thing, in the sense of, I remember once, um, it was probably several years ago, that the Board of Selectmen were hearing complaints about dogs on West Street, and like, you know, complaints and stuff like that, and I don't know if it would go to the Board of Selectmen level if there was a noise. And I don't know if it would go to the Board of Selectmen level if there was a noise level. But if you have twenty, he did say that there would be some barking at times during the day. If, if one dog sets off another dog and you have twenty-five dogs barking, you know, at what level does, you know, that become a nuisance? So how do you measure and how do you determine whether the noise factor from barking dogs is a nuisance to the neighboring, abutting neighbors? That's just, if, I'm just thinking not necessarily in the beginning, but if his business grows over the years, which I could see his business definitely growing because there's a need for it, then how do you manage it? And I think implementing some things from the ZBA in the beginning might help manage that. And then my last was where he said occasionally he would take one to two dogs overnight, and then three dogs overnight would, could, would determine a kennel, right Kathy?
Four.
Four.
Did he give you up to three?
Up to three.
Brewer Street, we did this today.
Yeah, yeah. So really hold to that or not allow for overnights. Um, and then I think other, I just wrote down some other things where people had concern. I don't think he's going to be doing much clearing there because it seems like he's not going to clear. It's more of a fence, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what I was trying to figure out. So it sounds like he's using, it sounds like he's fencing in, proposing a fence in like an existing trail.
Yeah.
On the property.
Okay, versus clearing a lot.
Yeah, yeah. And he, and he has to go to Conservation Commission. He's scheduled for Monday.
Okay.
I, I forgot the date for Monday, the night. Um, so he's, he's starting with Conservation on, and so, and so they'll talk about, um, regarding the wetland, the, the, the resource area, like what he can, uh, cut there.
Okay. And then his hours, he already agreed to change it from sunrise to sunset, but I think that's. So I think, um, the noise level with the volume of dogs that he anticipates he could grow up to, and then inviting the public into the land, I think that's generous, but also could probably, um, may possibly get out of control if a lot of the public came without monitoring. You know, his, his application says, I'm only going to have five trucks, but it could be, and he didn't say how much of the public could come. So, um, those are my concerns as he discussed it. And then the overnight, some limitation on that.
And you know, in terms of the public, was he talking about other?
Dog walkers.
As opposed to like, if one of you just wanted to go and walk your dogs there? So I, I didn't, I think he was talking about other dog, like walkers. But then I guess what defines a dog walker?
And how do you ever prevent just opening it up?
Yeah. So the thing was is if he's already got twenty-five dogs there and then everybody's like, hey, let's have a party and make it a hundred, right? You know, may not, never come to that point, but you always look for the scenarios of, I mean, it's, to me, it's a clever idea. I could see the growth happening in his business because people want their pets taken care of while they're at work, right? So he's saying, I'm going to pick him up at the house and exercise him and bring him back home. So I get what he's doing, but it's the area and the volume.
Mm-hmm. I think there do have to be some qualifiers on the number of animals that he allows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some way to regulate that.
And it could be sometimes you limit it now, and then if he needs more, he comes back to the ZBA and asks to increase it. And then if the neighbors are saying, hey, it's working out okay, but I think at the top, you're, you're already starting out of the gate twenty-five dogs.
Mm-hmm. And that's at any given time?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, any other?
No, that's me.
Millie, anything from you?
I, I do have some concerns about the traffic because I actually did drive up that way. And it's not a s- long stretch of visibility when you come out of that driving area. So I don't know if that's something that the, um, town needs to evaluate with the coming and going of, or the, the traffic pattern because it's, if there's not a lot of sight distance, so I have, I, I don't disagree. That could be, I think we would want to know if that's a, a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
I think one, I guess one of the other things I'd want to see if there's some way to regulate or have some permitting on this? Or, I, I have to have a stable permit for animals. I don't know if there's, it's not a kennel, it's not a boarding facility, but there, is there some animal permitting that should be happening that we need to investigate? Well, the dog walker one, you have to be a.
Yeah, see, I, I did some looking into this because, you know, there are state definitions for dog walkers and kennels and, and, and I don't know where to start with this. But when I read the interpretation of use, a home occupation is an occupation conducted as an accessory use in an op- in an owner occupied detached single-family dwelling or detached accessory structure. And, and this isn't inside, this is outside.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm questioning the use again because you look at the home occupation and they talked about dressmakers and someone that, um, notorious public, real estate broker, dressmaker, everything's inside. So I looked around to different towns and I looked at the state. And if you go back to state regulation, a home occupation was in a home, so no neighboring residents would even know that this existed. This was allowing one person, and that's why it says in our conditions, one person, to have a occupation in their home. We have another definition later in our zoning bylaw, seven oh five oh two oh G, under business uses.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the same thing, personal service establishment. An establishment whose primary business relies on customers coming and going on a regular basis, which provides a service, like, and they talk about home occupation of a hairdresser. It's one person taking in clients, but with the personal service, a hairdresser, that's when you have, say like, a downtown company where they have different hairdressers and you're, you have more of intensity. And when I read his application and I, I listened to what he had to say, and he's very nice and I love dogs, myself, that this is high intensity. You have five vans, you have, he wants six to eight people. Even in the application, he's asking for a business bathroom. Like, this is a business and a resident. And the whole purpose behind the home occupation was to have someone running an occupation in a home where none of the neighbors would even know this existed. That's why there are conditions at the bottom saying one employee and only twenty-five percent of the existing gross, gross floor area because it's supposed to be inside. Like, I have a problem approving or talking about a site plan because there are tons of conditions that I would like to talk about. But I go back to this use isn't allowed. And I went to the state regulations on dog, commercial boarding and kennels. It's an establishment used for boarding, holding, daycare, overnight stays, training of animals that are not the property of the owner of the establishment, at which such services are rendered in exchange for consideration in absence of the owner. So even though he says he's a dog walker, when you look up dog walkers, my daughter's a dog walker for WAG, and dog walkers and pet sitters go to the house and they do the service. You go to that person's house and you walk their dog.
Mm-hmm.
You go to their house and you sit, like, if he is bringing dogs back to his house, even though he says he's walking them and they're off leash, that's daycare, that's taking care of a dog. You're going, you're picking up that dog, you're taking care of it. It's not a real dog walker. A dog walker goes to the house. So that's why it's not in here. And if you Google Na- NADIC, just this year in NADIC, there's the same exact type of thing called doggy dates. And they had two zoning bylaws, just, they considered a kennel. And it was a woman who leased out part of a farm and she brought dogs back and forth with the van. And the town said that's a kennel. And kennels are, were allowed in residential areas there. So NADIC this year banned kennels in neighborhoods because these poor people said the traffic, the noise. And twenty-five dogs, I went to drop my daughter off in Burlington and I walked around, they had two dog parks and I love dogs. But every time a new dog came, they all ran and greeted that dog. And there was barking and we were walking down a bike trail and we could even smell it and, from far away because you did have two bins and it had a lot of dog poop in it. And even before we got to the dog park, I'm like, ooh, what's that smell? And the home occupation being inside a house would not bother any of the residents.
Right.
So I just, I don't see how this use works as a home occupation because he's not inside. And he doesn't have one employee and he's asking for a parking lot and he's asking for a bathroom and people are coming and going. And I see two other places in our zoning bylaw where this would fit, but it doesn't fit in home occupation. So, I mean, that's a question I have is, is I would actually like to ask the building zoning inspector, like, how, you know, how this works? And, um, if the ZBA felt they were going to go forward with it, I would say stick to the conditions, one employee and, you know, one van. It's, I feel it's a very big stretch or very creative zoning. And I know they're super nice and I like them and I like their ideas, but we have to follow our zoning bylaws or else someone's going to come out, like this NADIC. The neighbors will come and say, how did you allow this when this isn't allowed in your neighborhood? Like, I just, I don't know, I read it and I, I was open and then I heard, and he's very nice and very honest. But as I listened to everything he said, that's really high intensity for neighborhood use.
Can I ask a quick question? Is the ZBA meeting to hear this applicant on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
So we're meeting the zoning enforcement officer on the seventeenth about, um, Whitney Street, right? Hopefully the zoning enforcement officer is coming on seventeen?
Oh, you want him to come to the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we agreed on the seventeenth, he would give clarification for the zoning interpretation of, what's it called?
Stairers.
Stairers?
Yes.
Can he?
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't even catch that. Um, I, I had that he wanted to, um, um, get a, uh, determination from town council about what the procedure is for, for appealing, um, the building inspector's zoning interpretation.
Plus the seventeenth, because I think they're coming back on the seventeenth.
Cool.
Well, I think that, didn't we just say to the residents, we'd be doing this on the seventeenth? Talking to the zoning enforcement, so?
Yeah, so I, yeah, I thought also that we were having, we were separately asking town council about the process, but we wanted to clarify with Bob to talk about his roles. I thought you had mentioned that, talk about his roles and responsibilities.
I was going to ask him, but, but you wanted to come to the meeting?
I, I think it's, yeah.
Okay.
And at the sa- but same time on the seventeenth, what I was just going to say, if he was coming on the seventeenth, that Amy, we could ask about this use, like, how does he clarify? Give us his, his reasoning why he approved the dog walking use.
And you sent the email and you said, oh, it's because the owner lives there. But any owner can live in any house and start a job, but it doesn't mean it's, it doesn't make it a home.
Okay, wait a minute, let me just clarify this. So, so you, okay, so, so we're back on just zoning interpretation. We're, I'm going to, um, check with town council. And then you also, and I was going to check with Bob, just like what, I don't know whose job, I don't know what it is, but to, to just check with him what he believes the appeal process is. But you also want him to come to the meeting on the seventeenth for?
Well, Amy's, in the discussion, in the argument that Amy gave, if you were to write a letter to the ZBA right now, um, there was feedback from me and from Millie basically about, you know, different elements of the application. Whereas Amy's.
Okay, we're talking about stairs or we're talking about one twenty-five?
We're talking about one twenty-five. We're Rice, we're talking about Rice right now.
So, so is Bob, do you, do you want Bob at your meeting on the seventeenth?
Yes.
To talk about stairs?
Yes, plus, okay. But let's go back to Rice first. I'm not, I'm not trying to confuse you.
Okay.
But, um, but Millie and I gave more like, you know, I would recommend this, I would recommend that, hours, you know, um, clearing, things like that. So that was more definitive of, you know, part of his application. Whereas Amy just said to the board, can we rethink this use through? Should we even be talking about that level? Talk about the use level, the higher level, should it have even been allowed, right? And, and I was sitting here saying, well, that's not for us to decide. Bob, we just went through this, Bob decided, yes, the use is allowed. And Amy, through her research, said, I don't think that should have been allowed. So I'm thinking.
Well, you, you, you asked. What?
It's not quite right, I think. Isn't the application actually for a special permit to have a home occupation? So does he agree to come here that time of the application?
Um, yeah, his, his, he has a, I don't, I, I'm in Thomasville, I don't have. Oh, actually, I do have.
But it's for.
His, um.
He's not with, he's, I don't think he's.
But let me, wait a minute, let me just back up a second.
Okay.
Amy and, and Carrie specifically sent a question to Bob.
Right.
And, and Bob answered it and I gave you all a copy.
Yeah.
So, so do you want Bob to come in and talk about that? I don't even know if Bob's available, but.
I guess I'm trying to come to grips with, like, I want to give input to the ZBA. But I have, I, I could think of all sorts of conditions, but the main one in my head is, and I looked it up on the, everywhere, like, home occupation is an occupation in an owner occupied detached single-family dwelling or detached accessory structure. Like, it's not, and I read through the state bylaws, when they started this owner home occupation, it was allowed one person to work in their home. And this is an outside, like, he says he's a dog walker. But when you look into dog walkers, the dog walkers go to the people's house. They don't van bus dogs into their yard. And if you look at the way NADIC looked at it and other towns look at it, if you're picking up dogs and bringing them onto the property, you are running a kennel. Because kennel, it doesn't have to be overnight, it can be daycare. And he says it's not daycare, but daycare is when you're caring for someone else's dog when they're not there. It doesn't matter how you spin, how you call it. But I just wanted to look at, ask Bob maybe, or, or how do you, there's a home occupation in a residence, but there's also, he's saying it's personal service. It seems like it fits into the personal service of the business because of intensity. And when you look at home occupation for a house, they're saying, you know, one employee and the employee is, lives there and you can only have so much square footage inside your house. I'm just wondering how this home occupation spread it outside. If you read the state, and other towns actually spell it out, like, and we even say in. When you say in, it's in. And, and it means that if you're next door to him, you don't, you can't even tell from anything outside that he's running a business. So I feel like this is a real, I mean, if we allow this to go through, it's changing the definition of home occupation because it's supposed to be inside. So I guess I want to ask Bob, like, I don't even want to, I don't know how, I'm sure he's going to stand up to what he said. But then I go in as a planning board member and say, I might want to appeal that use because I have a hard time putting conditions and okaying a site plan where I feel the use doesn't fit. Because then people come back ten years from now and say, I live next to this huge dog kennel, who, who allowed that? Because it's not even allowed there. I can read the bylaws and it says the home occupation is an accessory use inside. And he has this company, his business is going Monday through Friday all day long. It's almost like his sleeping there is an accessory use to his business. I don't know, that's just, and I tried to look at it from all different angles, but the high intensity that is on the application that he even stated tonight, high intensity doesn't fit into a neighborhood.
So the one thing that I do see, because one of my big concerns is actually the traffic over there, that one of the requirements or conditions that you actually can't get a special, it's one of the only ones that isn't listed here to get a special permit, was that no traffic shall be generated by the home occupation in greater volume than would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood. And any need for parking generated by the conduct of the home occupation shall be met off the street and other than in a required front yard. So this, that, that number four, there's no special permit to get out of that. And I'm looking at a plan, my concern is I'm looking at a plan that has a giant parking lot in residential and the traffic sounds, there's really no traffic study here. I, I thought his estimates were honest and he did a, a, um, good faith effort to think about what it would look like. But it sounds like that road, traffic-wise, that's not really, uh, that is a greater volume than that neighborhood is used to or that you would expect to see in residential. So what do we do about that? That's hard to.
Well, I'm thinking that, that. Well, I'm thinking that, that perhaps your, your letter.
Seven thirty.
To the, to the ZBA could be just all focused on, on whether this use is, you know, should be granted a special permit or not. And, and instead of talking about, you know, the, the concerns that, what, what you know you would normally do with a site plan, like, the, the concerns that, that Millie and Michelle brought up, then instead, the, the letter is, is just, you know, stating that, you know, you don't believe that it's a home occupation for, you know, for, for these reasons. And so, you know, you, you don't, you know, you would like the board to consider, you know, not granting the, the special permit, or even just approving the app, you know, not, not approving the application. And then, and then you, you, you could add, but if.
Right. But if you do, here's our.
You know, and then put in these, you know, then put in these suggested, suggestions that you would like for conditions. You know, or you just make your letter, you know, just all about the zoning use, and saying, this is why you don't believe that it's, you know, an appropriate, and you can kind of incorporate the, the items that Millie and Michelle said, because, you know, you don't believe it's, that it's allowed in this, in that zoning district, because, you know, aside from the, you know, believing that it's, that it should be an indoor use, it's an outdoor use, and then, you know, the, you're concerned about the, you know, the, the, the traffic, right? The, the, yeah, the impact in general, you know, the traffic impact, the, the, the potential odors, you know, the, the noise. I mean, those are all, those are all valid, you know, I mean, those are all real impacts.
Yep.
And that, and that it's, that, you know, you believe it's, you know, more appropriate for a commercial district or something, or, you know.
And Amy, when we did do the rezoning of the bylaw, and talked about home occupations, and I think, we never thought a dog walker would, I don't think that ever came up.
I mean, is, but I mean, you, you could never, just in general, you know, whether we're talking dog walkers or not, but you could never list.
Right.
You just know, you can never list, and, you know, that's why there's always, you know, the phrases, you know, or similar, or related to, or like, or, you know, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I feel it's very specific about being inside, and it says right in our bylaw, you know, accessory use in. It doesn't say on a property, it says in the property.
Right, and, and to some extent, if we were to think about this conundrum here, it seems like the process would be, if you wanna, say it were a kennel, I'm just gonna, I'm not, whatever it is, let's say it's a kennel, then if you want that use in residential, then it should come to town meeting, that you, that the town, the residents have come together, and they want the allowed use in residential to exist. And then we don't have an argument here, we can say, well, it's allowed, and it's by right, and then you have it, but this concerns me in that it's way off of, I, I, like Amy said, they were super nice people, and this is a, I don't, I don't want to prevent people from going into business, so is there a way this can exist maybe without making it so commercialized in this area? I don't know, or?
I don't think you can.
Well, the thing is, is because he wants growth, he's planning for growth, so like Amy said, if he was, he had one truck, and did, you know, just one employee in one truck, and five dogs, it's different, he's not asking that, he's saying, I'm taking six acres, I'm having, you know, five to six employees, I'm having a separate area for a bathroom or whatever, and then I'm having twenty-five dogs, and, you know, so he's just really growing it out to a much larger scale.
So then this is a business, and then you need, what about handicap access? So like, if we're gonna say, you know, we have some questions about the use, but how about some conditions? I'd also wanna know about, should there be some sort of commercial dumpster with dump, with pickup, with service? It's not, so the town isn't responsible for picking up massive amounts or extra, I don't know, can, is there a limit? I guess you could do, put as much as you want out there.
Right, but we do do that in downtown, they have to have a dumpster, commercial uses, like, everything here says commercial, but try to fit it in a residential neighborhood, which, I mean, it isn't fair to the neighbors that are there.
So my recommendation, I, just listening to the board, and just because of time, it's now hitting, it hit midnight pretty soon, but is that, the board appears to be on the side of denying it, asking the ZBA to deny it, but not adding any other conditions, because I'm concerned if we, it's a sort of a mixed message.
But my concern would be if we don't put any conditions, then if, if it's just, if it's decided to move forward anyway, then I would at least want, so to some extent, how often does the ZBA really go through site plans? Is that, is it just, it's just with a special permit with site plan approval, that they are the board that looks at?
Yeah, if, if, if anything in the commercial districts, in the business districts, they do the site plan, and you do the site plans for industrial, and, I mean, ba- basically, that's how it's.
Okay, so they would be asking all the same questions that we would be asking, so we're just doing a technical review, but they would really also be looking at landscaping, no, this also circumvented design review by way of the, it's in residential, so it didn't even kick off design review, so.
Well, there's no, but there's no structure.
True.
There needs to be a structure.
But then we have this parking lot with, like, there's no landscaping plan with it, so aside from giving a condition of, like, you can't cut the bushes down, we, God only knows in the winter, if they go away, what happens? So, I, I would hate for us to say, deny it, and then not have a backup. I don't know, does the board, do you feel that it would be a mixed message, or, I'd almost think about a time restriction. Do we put, like, what if this is a disaster, and do, do we want some sort of time condition?
Like, you can condition it on two years, and it comes for a permit again. I mean, I definitely wanna write, we wanna deny it for these reasons, but like you said, yeah, maybe we have to have.
Can you do that, approve something, you can't do it, you can't do it.
Well, we did for the other dog thing on Brewer Street, he had three dogs for boarding, and it was conditioned to go just with his, his use. His, if some, if he sells his property to someone else, it would have to go back for.
Yeah, you can, you can assign the special permit to be with that person, not with the property.
The owner.
I thought you meant Amy, when I said.
Carrie said.
I thought you, no.
No, you can do it.
We have, I think.
I think you can do a condition of time.
There you go.
You can do a condition of time on a special permit, not a site plan, though, so that's the thing.
I do think somehow, when you write the letter, Kathy, that you write, you are going to include all the areas of our concerns as far as conditions. So do you think?
Well, I think that's what Carrie's struggling with, is whether you wanna do that.
So the reasons why.
And, you know, and I'll draft this and send it to you, but, you know, but, I mean, that's what Carrie's struggling with now.
But, so then when it makes sense to draft it, and we do, we do have the seventeenth to look at it and talk again, so then that way, we can kind of maybe think about it. Sorry, Millie?
Can, can review it.
Oh, yeah.
No, he's, oh, oh, yeah, that's right, so he's, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
So it's okay if we, if we look at the draft and then discuss it again on the seventeenth?
Yeah, you can, you can discuss your, your draft.
Because it won't go to the ZBA until?
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four.
Okay.
But I do think, I think the main thing is the intensity with the number of dogs and employees and parking and traffic.
Do you feel like you have enough for that, Kathy? Yeah, okay, all right. What's that?
You guys just got approval for a dog park at Yelling's, right?
Yeah.
So at least you can look at it, it's like, less than a quarter mile away from the house. Just seems a little weird that you have, like, a dog park there that we just worked so hard to raise funds for, get approved, and then like with another dog park in this guy's yard, I guess.
Yeah.
It's open, that's DCR land, it's owned by Department of Recreation.
And they can't let the dogs off leash.
It's a fenced-in dog park, and it's for the public, for everybody, it's not a commercial business in a residential neighborhood. There's no money involved or.
Yeah, no.
Well, you bring your own dog, right?
Yeah, you bring your own dog.
Or a dog walker.
Probably could show up, but.
Give him on a leash, right?
Yeah, they have to give him on a leash.
Well, once they get to the fence, they probably can let him go, right?
Well, on, on his own property.
Oh, I was talking about the dog park.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that, so then otherwise, we just, we've already discussed our next planning board meetings, next ZBA meeting, we know, joint meeting, we'll pitch out the first, see if that is something we could do, and.
Should we discuss about, so for clarification, Kathy, and I'm sorry if I confused you, but on the seventeenth, I was under the assumption that the board wanted Bob to come and talk about the, the use for the Whitney Street property, like, how he made his determination.
Or just uses in general, just what happens, like, how does he do it, and what is the appeal? If there's a problem, like, and what's the, I guess what's the forum, where if you didn't want, if you, so if the ZBA wasn't able to ask about the use, and it doesn't come to the planning board to, for any reason, then where is that place that people get to say, what, I don't agree with this use, like, there is no place for that, so is that something, is that mass general law, or is that just our town? I just don't know, so that would be helpful to figure out. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, meeting adjourned.